And our special guest in the gallery, I'd like to start, declare the meeting open at 9:33. And if I could start by acknowledging the Kandamooka people who are the traditional custodians of the land in which we meet. And I'd like to pay respect to their elders past and present and extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians that may be here this morning as well. Just a reminder that this meeting is livestreamed online, so you are being recorded in audio and video. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does to state and federal parliamentarians. And you're reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments and any comments which you make or may make during the course of this meeting. I'd also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking and for any councillors and officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when you're not speaking. So in the event of an evacuation, I'd like to ask you to remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors and down the stairwell onto Bloomfield Street. Public conduct at our meetings is covered under standing orders 8.4. And all members of the public present at a meeting must not without the prior approval of a chairperson make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs. Remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any other person present. We ask you to be suitably dressed and that you turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. I have a responsibility as chairperson to manage these conditions, regulations. And I have the responsibility of warning a member of present who may not be meeting or complying with these that I may ask you to leave the meeting. And that could actually put other meetings in the future. We do have a couple of leaves of absence today, but I firstly like to start with councillor Edwards who has contacted me this morning. He's got an injury and wasn't able to attend in person, but would like to participate via teleconference. So if I could please have a motion that councillor Mark Edwards be permitted to participate in the meeting via teleconference. Move councillor Bishop Secidi, councillor Boglari, those in favour, those against. That's carried unanimously. And poor Golei is absent, which takes us to our next motion that we grant councillor Golei a leave of absence. So can I have a move room second of that? Thanks. Move councillor Mackenzie, second councillor Mitchell, those in favour, those against.
Aye.
Thank you councillor Edwards. That's carried unanimously. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our devotional segment. And it's a great pleasure for me to invite pastor Stephen Thomas of the C3 Redland Bay Church. She was a member of our ministers' fellowship to lead us in a brief devotion segment.
Good morning and thank you very much. Good morning all and thank you very much for having us here this morning. I really appreciate and take this opportunity as an honour. I want to talk a little bit about leadership and discipleship today, but I'm going to start with a scripture, just a short one. And this scripture, I don't normally like to take scripture out of context, but this is the sort of scripture that doesn't matter what the context, the meaning is always going to be the same. And it appears in three of the gospels. And Jesus says in Matthew 20:28, "Just as the Son of Man did not come to be served, but to serve, and to give His life as a ransom for many..." Excuse me. And as I say, I want to talk about the idea of serving and leadership and discipleship today. Jesus gave us a great model for discipleship and leadership. In the, thank you so much, in the three years, of course, that He had 12 disciples. He had great times of mentorship, teaching, leading, showing, discipleship. So when He returned to the Father, these 12 men were ready. They were trained, they were ready, they had been shown, they were experienced and they're ready to carry on the work. The vision that had been given to them had been set by Jesus in the three years that they'd been together. Now we know how important it is for us to train those that are coming after us. Because if we're just doing it by ourselves, then we die, the vision dies, there's nothing left. So it's important that we've always got somebody behind us to share the vision with so that they can see and serve the bigger picture that we too have been called to and are serving. Now, of course, within Jesus' small cohort of 12, there was only one dissenting voice in the three years. Of course, that was the voice of Judas. Judas' problem was that, yeah, he was following Jesus, but the idea was that he was hoping to use Jesus for his ends. He was hoping that Jesus would serve his needs, his political needs, revolution, rebellion, overthrow, all those things. But of course, it didn't work that way and we all know what happened to Judas because of resentment. His mind, his heart were poisoned, betrayed Jesus and of course, and then Judas committed suicide. Now Jesus did all those things, there was a revolution, but not the way that Judas wanted. Jesus was true to the vision, true to the Father and obedient to that from day one till the end. And even, even, even in the garden of the cemetery, the night before all of this happened, the crucifix etc. And he's praying, this prayer, and he's asking his fathers, is there any other way? That place, but at the end of the prayer, he says, nevertheless, your will, not my will, be done. And, and that's, that's obviously very noble, but it's also something that we can look to. When we reflect or somebody asks us, why would you do what you're doing? Why would you put yourself through that? Why do you do what you're doing? Well, it's important that we check back with ourselves, check back with our leaders, but check back with the vision. I do it because I was called. I don't have to do what I do. I do it because I was called and I get to do it. I get to serve. And if you think of the word Minas Taurine, take half that word into minister. Minister is to serve up. In Australia, you serve up soup. Ministry, you're serving up. In the roles in professional work that particularly you people here do, it's important to always remember that. That we're checking with the vision, we're checking with our leaders, checking with ourselves. Are we on track? Have we deviated? Are we serving ourselves or are we serving what we've been called to? I hope that helps. Somebody today? I'd like to...
And our special guests in the gallery like to start, I've declared the meeting open at nine thirty-three. And if I could start by acknowledging the Kwandamuca people who are the traditional custodians of the land in which we meet. And I'd like to pay respect to their elders past and present and extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians that may be here this morning as well. Just a reminder that this meeting is live streamed online, so you are being recorded in audio and video. Councillors, a reminder that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does for state and federal parliamentarians. And you're reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments and any comments which you make or may make during the course of this meeting. But also I'd like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking and for any councillors and officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when you're not speaking. So in the event of an evacuation, I'd like to ask you to remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors and down the stairwell onto Bloomfield Street. Public conduct at our meetings is covered under standing orders eight point four. And all members of the public present at a meeting must not without the prior approval of a chairperson make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs. Remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any other person present. We ask you to be suitably dressed and that you turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. I have a responsibility as chairperson to manage these conditions, regulations. And I have the responsibility of warning a member of present who may not be meeting or complying with these, that I may ask you to leave the meeting and that could actually put other meetings in the future. We do have a couple of leaves of absence today, but I firstly like to start with councillor Edwards who has contacted me this morning. He's got an injury and wasn't able to attend in person, but would like to participate via teleconference. So if I could please have a motion that councillor Mark Edwards be permitted to participate in the meeting via teleconference. Move councillor Bishop, second to councillor Boglari, those in favour, those against, that's carried unanimously. And Paul Golei is absent, which takes us to our next motion, that we grant councillor Golei a leave of absence. So can I have a move, move room, second of that, thanks. Move councillor Mackenzie, second to councillor Mitchell, those in favour, those against, that's.
Aye.
Thank you councillor Edwards, that's carried unanimously. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our devotional segment. And it's a great pleasure for me to invite pastor Stephen Thomas of the C three Redland Bay Church. She was a member of our ministers fellowship to lead us in a brief devotion segment.
Good morning and thank you very much. Good morning all and thank you very much for having us here this morning. I really appreciate and take this opportunity as an honour. I want to talk a little bit about leadership and discipleship today, but I'm going to start with a scripture, just a short one. And this scripture, I don't normally like to take scripture out of context, but this is the sort of scripture that doesn't matter what the context, the meaning is always going to be the same. And it appears in three of the gospels. And Jesus says in Matthew twenty twenty-eight, just as the son of man did not come to be served, but to serve. And to give his life as a ransom for many, excuse me. And as I say, I want to talk about the idea of serving and leadership and discipleship today. Jesus gave us a great model for discipleship and leadership in the, thank you so much. In the three years, of course, that he had twelve disciples. He had great times of mentorship, teaching, leading, showing, discipleship. So when he returned to the father, these twelve men were ready. They were trained, they were ready, they had been shown, they were experienced and they're ready to carry on the work. The vision that had been given to them had been set by Jesus in the three years they'd been together. Now, we know how important it is for us to train those that are coming after us. Because if we're just doing it by ourselves, then we die, the vision dies, there's nothing left. So it's important that we've always got somebody behind us to share the vision with so that they can see and serve the bigger picture. That we too have been called to and are serving. Now, of course, within Jesus' small cohort of twelve, there was only one dissenting voice in the three years. Of course, that was the voice of Judas. Judas' problem was that, yeah, he was following Jesus. But the idea was that he was hoping to use Jesus for his ends. He was hoping that Jesus would serve his needs, his political needs, revolution, rebellion, overthrow, all those things. But of course, it didn't work that way and all know what happened to Judas because of resentment. His mind, his heart were poisoned, betrayed Jesus and of course, and then Judas committed suicide. Now, Jesus did all those things, there was a revolution, but not the way that Judas wanted. Jesus was true to the vision, true to the father and obedient to that from day one till the end. And even, even, even in the garden of the cemetery, the night before all of this happened, the crucifixion, et cetera. And he's praying, this prayer, and he's asking his fathers, is there any other way? No, please. But at the end of the prayer, he says, nevertheless, your will, not my will, be done. And, and you know, that's, that's, that's obviously very noble, but it's also something that we can look to. When we reflect or somebody asks us, why would you do what you're doing? Why would you put yourself through that? Why do you do what you're doing? Well, it's important that we check back with ourselves, check back with our leaders, but check back with the vision. I do it because I was called. I don't have to do what I do, I do it because I was called and I get to do it, I get to serve. And if you think of the word Minas Taurine, take the half that word into minister. Minister is to serve up. In Australia, you serve up soon. Ministry, you're serving up. In the roles in professional work that particularly you people here do, it's important to always remember that. That we're checking with the vision, we're checking with our leaders, checking with ourselves, are we on track, have we deviated? Are we serving ourselves or are we serving what we've been called to? I hope that helps. Somebody today, I'd like to just finish with a prayer. And if you don't mind, I'll pray for you now. Father, I ask that we can all be humble today, enough to listen to your wisdom, your leadership as we make decisions that serve the bigger picture. Help us to see outside our needs and our focus so that we can serve those we've been asked to serve. Help us in our leadership, our mentorship and our discipleship. Bless the leaders of this great city of Redlands in Jesus' name, Amen. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda councillors is our recognition of achievement. And for those of you who weren't able to attend our pre-general morning tea, I'd just like to take this opportunity to put on record for inspiring other Redlanders in the future. That on our minutes, that we have some incredible people in our chambers today who have been acknowledged through the King's Birthday Honours Award. And if I could take this opportunity to make sure it's on record, to talk about the incredible people we have in our city who are in the room today. So firstly, I'd like to acknowledge Dr Tony Badrick. Tony, Dr Tony Badrick has been named a member in the General Division of the Order of Australia for significant service to diagnostic pathology and leadership roles and to education. He has been CEO, President, Vice President, Chair, Treasurer, Secretary and a member of numerous Australian, Australasian and international associations for clinical chemistry or biochemistry or laboratory medicine and pathology. He has held academic and advisory roles at five universities, has authored about two hundred peer reviewed articles and eleven academic book chapters and is a reviewer for thirty-two scientific journals. He has received a distinguished fellow award from the Royal College of Pathologists of Australasia and an outstanding service medallion from the Australian Association for Clinical Biochemistry and Laboratory Medicine. Next, we have Dr Donald Gilmore from Wellington Point. Dr Gilmore received a Medal of the Order of Australia in the General Division for Service to the Forestry Sector. He was Principal of the Department of Forestry's Forestry Training Centre, Team Leader of a Nepal Australia Forestry Project and Head of Forest Conservation Programme for the International Union for Conservation of Nature in Switzerland. He is former Chair of the Centre for People and Forests in Bangkok and is currently an adjunct associate professor in the Tropical Forests and People Research Centre at the University of the Sunshine Coast. Following that, we have Graham Roberts Thompson from Petchamudlow. Graham Roberts Thompson received a Medal of the Order of Australia in the General Division for Service to Public Administration. He has worked in Queensland and Australian government roles since nineteen seventy-nine with Protocol Queensland within the Department of Premier and Cabinet and within the Department of Prime Minister and Cabinet. He has coordinated and managed a wide range of events including Commonwealth Heads of Government meetings and the state funeral and provided protocol etiquette and life field presentations for local government leaders. We also have Raymond Sanford from Cleveland who received a Medal of the Order of Australia in the General Division for Service to veterans and to families and their families. He is a past welfare officer and advocate for the Redlands R S L sub-branch and is currently advocacy officer for the Naval Association of Australia Queensland section. He has been a member of the Naval Association of Australia since nineteen ninety-nine and the Queensland delegate since two thousand and seventeen. And has also held committee positions with the Naval Association of Australia Queensland section. Cody Schaefer from Alex Hills, Cody Schaefer, is it Alex Hills Cody or is it actually Cleveland? It is, it is Cleveland now. Cody has received a Medal of the Order of Australia in the General Division for Service to Youth and to the Community of Queensland. He has been creating programs and events to help change the lives of young people since he was a teenager himself. He founded the Gundy Youth Studio, a weekly after-school event to get teenagers off the streets and learning hip-hop dance instead and borderline Australia, which provides free services for teenagers to improve mental, mental strength and health. Among his many community roles, he's also been a youth director and camp coordinator for Rotary. And I'm told he is the youngest recipient in the country of this particular award, so congratulations. Next, we have Dr Robyn Thompson from Cleveland. Dr Robyn Thompson received a Medal of the Order of Australia in the General Division for Service to Medicine, particularly as a midwife and breastfeeding specialist. She has been a registered midwife for about fifty years and has dedicated her life to helping thousands of mothers bond with their babies through pain, pain-free breastfeeding. In two thousand and fourteen, she founded the Thompson Method, which provides evidence-based education, gentle guidance and twenty-four seven support so women can breastfeed with confidence and free from pain. And for those of you who haven't done a little bit of research on Robyn, I encourage you to do that. She has changed the lives of many, many women across the world and probably doesn't do it justice with the two paragraphs that I have, having had a chat with her just before. And also unfortunate not here today, but we'd like to acknowledge Michael Shearer, who could not be here today to receive a public, sorry, to receive acknowledgement for his public service medal for outstanding public service to youth, community and families in regional Queensland. He has thirty-five years' experience in the human services sector and has worked within several Queensland government departments throughout the state. Michael has delivered, managed and led child protection, youth justice, social housing, disability, community recovery and community services initially during his long career. Once again, I think you can all agree that they are all very, very worthy recipients of our King's Birthday honours. And I perhaps would like you to all stand councillors and acknowledge them for their great work.
Yeah, we might actually come down the front, so we are really large, so.
Madam, I'd like to raise a point of order, please. Can I, well, just before we do, can I finish this section first, please? I have recognition of achievement. Um, I understand councillor Burridge, you have a recognition of achievement?
Thank you, Madam Shearer. For those who are unfamiliar with the Aussie drop bears, they are made up of professional and collegiate baseball players, almost entirely from Australia with a few Americans who have played professionally. Players are selected from across the country through a series of rigorous and competitive selection. With camps to compete at the nation's best and the international tournaments. The Aussie drop bears have selected three Queensland players to join the international team of under fourteen boys for the Babe Ruth World Series. To play between the fifth and the twelfth of August. Aidan Lawson, who started his young playing career with Redland Rays baseball and rookie ball at the eligible age of six. Was selected for the team for outstanding batting and fielding skills after the recent Down Under Winter Classic held at the Gold Coast. Adding to the excitement, Aidan will be part of history-making as a member of the first Australian team to compete in the under fourteen boys Babe Ruth World Series. Competing against countries like the USA, Aruba and Mexico. Aidan has played in the Bangu Baseball Academy, supported through Redland Rays baseball. Club to fine-tune his batting and fielding skills and credits his accomplishments from the Sheldon Club's coaching support. The Lawsons have requested our recognition and give special thanks to specialist and head coach James Philbrick. With only a month's notice before the ten-day tournament, Redland City Council grants team have been trying to assist Aidan with financial assistance for representing his city internationally. Redland City Council wish Aidan Lawson and the international team well in their amazing opportunity to claim gold medal glory for baseball and Australia.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Burridge. Next item is just receipt and confirmation of minutes. If I could have a mover and second of the minutes of the general meeting held on the twenty-first June twenty twenty-three be confirmed, move councillor Hughes, second to councillor Talty. Any items of correctness, there being none, I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously. Also, we need to move the minutes of special budget meeting held on the twenty-sixth of June. Could I have a mover and second of that, move councillor Mackenzie, second to councillor Mitchell, those in favour, those against?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously. Councillors, the next item is just declaration of prescribed conflicts of interest and declarable conflicts of interest. I think you should understand your responsibilities and it's listed in the, it's outlined in the back of your agenda there. If I could just quickly remind you that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. That means any prescribed or declarable conflicts of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting so that this can be achieved. These declarations could also be made at any time throughout the meeting. Councillors, I'm just going to raise one that I've raised previously in regards to item fifteen point two. There was some discussion earlier that sort of started lending itself to tourism accommodation that might come out of this. So I just wanted to put this on record again, if I could, that I did do this back in January twenty twenty-two. In regards to current amendment, that is with the state government in regards to tourism opportunities in our rural area. So if I could just reiterate that for the, for the record today, that if we do go into that discussion at some point by chance, even though it's not about that particular topic. I also acknowledge that some of the criteria that's been put in there has been built off that, so of that particular item. So I just wanted to make sure that you're all clear of that and that I'm being transparent about that discussion. And for the record, it was nineteenth of January twenty twenty-two. And it was basically as an owner-operator or tourism business, there may be a perception of a conflict of interest. And that I had considered my position and firmly the opinion that I can participate in the, in the discussion. If you're comfortable with that, just putting that on record, we're happy if you want to vote on it again, councillors, I'm in your hands.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You mentioned as an owner-operator, I thought the business was your family business, so um, just seeking clarity on that, because.
Yes.
So as, what, as a family trust, is it?
Well, there's, there's multiple, but yes, I am, I'm a beneficiary to.
So your part. Okay, thank you.
To those businesses and an owner-operator. And I'm just reiterating what I said back in January twenty twenty-two, I just wanted to be really clear. Would you prefer to take a vote on that councillors, to be clear, you'd be happy for that? Just making sure, all right. Any other conflicts? All right, being none, then we'll move on to matters outstanding over to your CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good morning councillors and those online. The notice of motion on the investigation into a location for a wildlife hospital, a report will come back to a future meeting of council. The subordinate local law number four, local government controlled areas, facilities and roads, community consultation, that will come back to a future meeting of council, just addressing dot point three of that outstanding matter. Seven point three is the local government infrastructure designation consultation strategy for the Burke Darrt community precinct. A report will come back to a future meeting of council to consider the submissions made during that process. Seven point four is the notice of motion from councillor Boglari in relation to the Hindman Road Sports Precinct. That item is being addressed today as item sixteen point one. And the last one, the review of shaping southeast Queensland regional plan, that report is listed today as item fifteen point two of today's agenda.
Thank you, CEO. We're in our own minutes, so with that, we go to public participation. If I could, councillors, in accordance with section six point ten, council meeting standing orders, a period of fifteen minutes may be made available by resolution to permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest relating to local government. So could I please have a mover and second of the meeting standing orders be suspended for a fifteen-minute public participation segment? To allow members of the public to address council on matters of public interest related to local government, move councillor Burridge, second to councillor Bishop, those in favour, those against?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously. So firstly councillors, we have Mr Craig Moore from Loater who represents sit and chat regarding sit and chat conservation tables. Just before I ask you to speak as you approach the microphone, Mr Moore, just you might have seen some signage around chambers regarding public participation at meetings. It's council's usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name, name and suburb or organisation that they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. This information is recorded in the minutes of our meeting, which is a public document available at council's administration building and also published on our council website. I also would like to advise you, this meeting is being recorded in audio, visual and that by speaking, you acknowledge and agree that recording and video will be placed in the public domain. So if you could start by stating your name and suburb or the organisation you represent, stand unless you're unable to do so, act and speak with decorum. We ask you to be respectful and courteous, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. And I just have some responsibilities once again to consider each application on their merit and any relevant matter in making my decision to allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Only those members of the public who have an approved application are able to do so. Details on how to apply are on our website and we also have, I have the responsibility of determining the maximum number of speakers based on the number of persons wanting to speak and the time available. Each speaker has a maximum of five minutes. And with that, also I have the responsibility if necessary to withdraw the approval to address council before the time period has elapsed. Most importantly, sorry, it's a long list, debate and discussion cannot be entered into at this time. So over to you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor and council. No such thing as coincidences as the last speaker had about service and that's what we're about. We are sit and chat, communities working together and volunteering together while solving problems together. A first of its kind project never seen before. Sit and chat conversation table and chairs permanently placed at strategic locations, parks, waterfronts and retirement communities. Attaching a plate to the existing aluminium table that you already see in parks and added in expensive cost. We place a large aluminium plate on the tabletop surface and laser engrave a QR code and large wording that reads, anyone who sits at this table is open to have a conversation with anyone else who sits at this table. The QR code links to an app with pop-up table map location and calendar for other groups and charities to schedule their own dates and time slots at the tables. Keeping interests in the tables while promoting their own causes in the public eye. The goal of these tables is to encourage conversations between people of all ages, especially in the Redlands with the older demographics. Most people won't sit down at a standard aluminium table when there's two or more people already seated. But the orange conversation table gives that person the invitation to join in. The benefits of these tables are numerous. For one, they provide easy access for other charities to sit at the table in public location to promote their own causes. And as the majority of smaller charities can't afford a business location. Also allowing the public to get involved and volunteer at their own times, connecting with others. In a world where technology often isolates us, these tables offer away the breakdown barriers and foster a community connection. Additionally, they provide a sense of belonging and contribution to the community while being part of something bigger than ourselves. The conversation tables will provide a place where people can come together and enjoy the company of others, share stories, make new friends. For our seniors, these tables will provide the opportunity to stay engaged in their community and continue to learn and grow. Sit and chat volunteers appear at Cleveland, Manly and Mount Gravat markets, also major events. Sit and Chat volunteers appear at Cleveland, Manly and Mount Gravette markets, also major events during the week. We work closely with many charities like Redlands Coast Suicide Prevention and they have expressed a need for these tables on the islands due to the high suicide rates. The Brisbane City Council has allocated already two conversation tables that will be placed in Winham and Manly at the end of this month. Uh the Redlands Council reply so far to Sit and Chat has been two emails. Uh and I quote, unfortunately, the council is still in not in a position to com- commit to any additional infrastructure and asset changes. So we do appreciate you hearing us today to plead our case. All we are asking is for the council to place a plate on a couple of tables in public areas and retirement villages to gauge a response as a pilot project. Un- unlike other initiatives the council has been involved in before, conversation tables don't have a stigma and can be utilized by all other charities. One in five Australians, conclusion one in five Australians, experience mental health condition. That can lead to addictions, isolation, depression. Many people don't seek professional help due to fear of judgment, lack of access or affordability, or simply not knowing where to go. Sit and Chat hopes to bridge this gap by providing a safe and welcoming, non-judgmental space for people to express themselves and connect with others. This project will save lives.
Mr, I'll just advise you that your time's almost up.
Okay, thank you. Um uh this project will say that the decision we create, this can create a ripple effect, attracting media attention, showing all of Australia the can innovation ideas the Redland Council will bring to this community. Redlands Council, you first must believe.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Mr Terry Sullivan. If you want to come to the microphone and um I think you heard the the uh prelude to how you address council. If you would come up there and just start with your name and address or organisation that you represent, um you can start when you're ready and just remind reminder that no debate or discussion can be entered into at this time. Thank you. Go to you.
Thank you, Mayor and esteemed councillors. Good morning, everyone, and thanks for having me. Um who'd like to talk coffee? Yeah, that's right. It's uh one of uh one of the most popular passions, one of the most popular pastimes. A trip to the cafe is normally well looked forward to, uh something, an enjoyable part of our morning. And uh there's no shortage of choice. We're really spoilt for choice in the Redlands here and there's no shortage of shops and vendors who are willing to help us out with our morning needs, so um I'd like to like to start on that note. Um so to today, I'd like to um highlight the uh the connection between our climate change, composting, community gardens and coffee and what they all have in common. So as heatwaves sweep across the northern hemisphere summer, temperature records tumble. Once again, the importance of reducing greenhouse gas emissions is brought into focus, not by any political, particular political political persuasion, but blunt reality. Clearly, greater effort is needed to address this growing threat and no sector is spared responsibility preserving our one and only earth. The Australian government even states that if food waste was a country, it would be the third largest largest greenhouse gas emitter behind the United States and China. That's significant. That's that's food for thought. Um in two thousand and eighteen, Australia generated around four point four million tonnes of food waste and eighty five percent was sent to landfill. Landfilling with food and other organic waste is a particular concern due to subsequent greenhouse gas emissions which contribute to climate change. It is estimated that two point se- two point two percent of greenhouse gas emissions in Australia emanate from landfill. These are not my words, but those of the environment Department of Environment Energy spoken in two thousand and nineteen. Landfill is also a concern from an economic perspective. The amount of food organics deposited to landfill cannot be generated into any useful or profitable resources. It's gone it's gone forever. Resources such as energy and water used to grow the food was wasting, costing the Australian economy thirty six point six billion dollars annually. It's not chump change, yeah? Okay, so why composting? Consistent with the Queensland Government's Waste Management and Resource Recovery Strategy, composting transforms our current food system from a linear system into a circular system, which meets one of the goals set out by the strategy, transitioning circular economy for waste. Um the Redland City Council's Waste Reduction and Recycling Plan, um the Redland City City Council's current approach to food waste is to include it in the red curbside collection bins. Audits show that eighteen percent of rubbish collected through the red curbside bins is food waste, which equates to seven thousand eight hundred and fifty tonnes or approximately fifty kilograms annually per resident. Recovery of organics from curbside waste stream represents the single biggest opportunity to move the needle on landfill targets according to Comsec in two thousand and twenty one. Redland City Council Waste Reduction and Recycling Plan identifies four key levers for reduction of food waste to landfill. One, reduction via the Queensland State Government Love Food Hate Waste Programme. Two, support home composting. Number three, encourage community composting initiatives. And four, implementing a food waste collection service when it's affordable, according to the plan. Measuring waste reduction is a necess- a necess- a necessity for measuring progress. The composition of the red curbside bins is determined by audit, subject to budget funding. The most recent bin audit with published results was conducted in two thousand and seventeen. That's six years ago. Uh Redland City Case, the Redland City Council Waste Reduction and Recycling Plan also highlights that council curbside bin collection services are long-term contractual arrangements which, in the case of Redlands Coast, runs until twenty thirty. New trucks will be required for a FOGO service. Council will need to work with the existing contractor around the date of a potential food waste collection service implementation considering the considering the existing contract inclusions and remaining life of the contract. With such constraints, it seems that Redland City Council will need to consider other levers to enable its landfill aspirations and greenhouse gas reduction targets. An interim stopgap measure, the Brisbane City Council has introduced and promoted community composting hubs. They have thirty of them last time I looked. Um at Oakland Street Community Gardens. So we'll move forward now into into the coffee part, which I know you've all been all been hanging hanging out for. Community uh Oakland Street Community Gardens have relied on voluntary donations of labour since inception in two thousand and five. Voluntary labour has mostly been used to grow various crops and maintaining the grounds. Volunteers have also carried out composting duties which commonly use animal manures, the collection of which and handling is fueled with various degrees of enthusiasm. In comparison, coffee is clean to handle once bagged, which is common practice. A trip to the cafe is normally a pleasurable experience.
Mr Sullivan's advising you about time, so.
Okay. Coffee grounds are sterilised through the pouring process, coffee grounds do not contain weeds or pathogens, and coffee grounds do not attract known pests. A modern solution to a modern problem. In August twenty twenty two, Oakland Street was engaged by local councillor and the Redland City Council and introduced to the owner of Citron Cafe at Wellington Point. The vans and chain of restaurants produces one fifty kilograms per week from four South Brisbane uh South Brisbane locations. So with that, I'd like to present the report. Um I'll leave four copies here on the dais for anyone who's interested in in um in in reading it. Um this represents uh i- it's presented in three stages. So the drivers for the uptake of source separation community-based composting initiatives. Number two, local examples of community composting in Brisbane, Yandina Community Gardens, Carigara Island, which was a source separation initiative. Uh the specific experience of Oakland Street Community Gardens Coffee Composting Program. And three, further recommendations for uptake in the Redland City. It includes also some uh technical details and um suggestions for engaging various community groups and small businesses to to assist. I'd like to highlight again the urgency of the climate change crisis and notable impacts already being felt. I'd like to remind people in the room, residents, councillors, officers and executives that we need not wait for silver bullet solutions to be funded and developed. There are specific examples within the means of small business, bands of volunteers just begging for support from local government and businesses. Positive changes within reach and can be implemented for minimal investment and just require initiative, collaboration and positive mindset.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Again, there's four copies here if anyone wants to take one and I'll also email them around to each councillor.
Appreciate that. Thanks so much for your time. All right, councillors, I'll need a mover and seconded that we uh resume standing orders. Move councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
Those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. That's carried unanimously. We haven't been advised of any petitions or presentations for today. Um we do have an item of uh business that if I might ask to be withdrawn, a mover and seconded at thirteen two, thirteen point two be withdrawn, can I have a mover and seconded? Move councillor Hughes, seconded seconded councillor Mackenzie. We had a we had a discussion about this. This is the Audit and Risk Committee meeting minutes. Um I'll put the motion, those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously. Okay, we're getting to the um councillor reports now, councillors. So councillor Talty, you wanted to raise a point of order.
I would like to raise a point of order, Madam Mayor, please. Um in accordance with the standing orders at section three, I'm going to ask that you make a judgment as is required under three point four point one, which says that in the absence of a standing order governing a particular matter, the chairperson in the meeting may make a decision on that. Uh the councillor to my right has orchestrated to move to sit next to me at this meeting. Immediately that she sat down, she declared loudly and in front of all the award recipients in the back room and the officers, you are nobody twice. She is a bully and she is attempting to exert coercive control by sitting next to me and I would like her required to move back to her original seat, please.
Councillors, I'm going to ask for an adjournment if I could to discuss this, please. Move councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Mitchell. Those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? To the adjournment. Okay, so those in favour is councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Beridge, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Hewlett, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against councillor Talty. So if I may um with that uh respectfully ask if any members of the public could just um we'll take it for five minutes to get it sorted. Those against, that's carried. Um, just checking councillor Hewlett, you've got your hand up for that one, resumed. That's, that's, um, unanimous then, thank you councillors. All right. Next item is the, it's thirteen point one, the interim June twenty twenty three monthly financial report, can I have a mover and seconder for that, thanks? Move councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Boglari, uh, would you like to speak to it councillor Mackenzie?
Um, just to note that this is just an interim report and there's still, um, end of financial year adjustments that need to be made. Um, it does look like the operating surplus is quite high, but that's due to, um, revenue that's come in in June, that is actually for the following financial year, um, but as I said, we still have to do some end of financial year adjustments and that those figures will not be, um, the final figures for our annual report.
Speak, speaker against, no? Question?
Um, just, thank you madam mayor, uh, just following on, it's probably a question, question on notice if I may, um, just in regard to the, um, uh, the interim up report. I mentioned in the, uh, budget meeting, it would be helpful in future if we could get a, a comparison of the projects that we intended at the beginning of the year and the ones that we were delivered. So we've got a bit of a comparison analysis.
Your question is?
Question is, could we, could we have something that would give us a guidance so that we can, uh, get better at our planning? Also see some of the great benefits that have been achieved through the course of the year, just when we get to that final, um, report. Yeah, just in terms of carryovers, it's just the transparency there and, um, effective processes and decision making in the public interest. It'd be good to get lining, line of sight between what we intended and where we ended up, so it's just a request if we could, by the time we get to the in, to the update.
I think that was noted last time.
Yeah, I just thought I'd.
Yep.
Wouldn't be in the last link.
Yes, please.
Yeah, through you madam mayor, at that, that, uh, point taken, probably wouldn't be in the monthly financial report, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions and speakers against? Just might make a point that I had the, um, privilege of attending the Toulon Regional Council's general meeting, it was Mayor Antonio's last general meeting for his forty one, quarter, his commitment to his community. Um, uh, but they also were talking about their monthly financial reports and I think it's just a, uh, obviously a challenge which will also be raised, I think, um, at the LGAQ conference in regards to FAG's money coming in and other money coming in at the end of a, of a year and not being able to budget for that. It'd be much easier if we had, if we had foresight of that at the beginning of a financial year than receiving it at the end, so just for comparisons across councils, we know it's not us alone. Um, but we obviously try to make the most of every cent that we can get, um, to avoid impacts to our ratepayers. So with that, um, any summing up councillor Mackenzie?
Aye, thank you madam.
I'll put the motion those in favour. Those against?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously, thank you. Item thirty two was withdrawn, drawn, so now we have thirteen point three corporate procurement policy, move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
Yes, brief from madam mayor, the report in front of us recommends council continue the strategic contracting procedures. This was first adopted by us in, uh, the twenty second of July twenty twenty. It's been a really, uh, fantastic initiative in my opinion, I think there's been some great results so far. The SCP increased our ability to influence not only the economic values through bulk buying and local pricing planning, but social and sustainable outcomes that require longer planning cycles, review the supply chain risks and opportunities, community and market engagement and, uh, and looks at multi-year contracting. So without going into the detail, I'd point that we're adopting today, if this, if this is adopted today, the corporate procurement policy, the strategic contracting procedures and the annual contracting plan, so there's an awful lot of detail in all of those. And, uh, we'd encourage our local suppliers to, to, uh, get engaged, we're very proud of the increased local spend. And, uh, let's hope that continues to mature and improve, thank you.
Any speakers against? Being none, question?
I think just what we spoke about, that, um, the CEO will bring us back up.
We would, we have agreed that there will be, um, some, uh, briefing notes in regards to this through the, the regular briefings we have, um, to the delegations that have been provided to the CEO, yes. Yep, question?
Well, just, just also noting the questions about this, um, as, as we move forward, finding ways for local businesses to, 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 to have more effective.
Quest, your, your question?
That, I'm stating that we are, have asked the question about how we can make the, uh, contracting, uh, procurement process more effective and efficient for local, local businesses.
Right, and I think that's actually already in the, in the policy. And what we were told the other day, that question was answered if I recall, by the, uh, chief procurement officer. Councillor Beridge, you have a question?
Uh, yes, could I go and swap my glass over there please? Oh, you have, okay.
No, no, comfortable with that madam mayor.
Councillor Edwards?
Your microphone was off.
Oh, my apologies, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, that's carried.
Microphone please.
Sorry. The next item is a, um, amended motion councillors, um, as you recall, we do this every year. Um, we will require to put councillor Boglari's name and councillor Williams' name, uh, as the two official de- delegates, um, as has been agreed by councillors, so that's on item two, if we can just amend that where it, to split the voting rights of the conference equally between two official delegates, um, Mayor Williams and councillor Boglari, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I've, I really did want to, uh, I am going to go to the conference and I was keen to be the delegate, but I actually have concerns with some of the wording in one of the, um, motions. So if that's okay, that I can still be the delegate, but I'm concerned about the wordings in one of them.
Sure, I mean delegates vote on everyone's.
Okay, I just wanted to check, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, and I haven't got a mover and seconder yet, but I just wanted to make sure that that was there and you had, you received the amendment, so move councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to it councillor Mackenzie?
Um, each year we have the local government conference where seventy seven councils across Queensland, um, put together motions, um, for the LGAQ to advocate to the state on our behalf. And we have several motions, I won't, all councillors are aware of them, um, and there's just an amended with the wording on, um, it was a motion six. Motion six, and it has all been sent around, it was as per the discussions that we had in our workshops on Monday.
Any speakers against? Uh, councillor Boglari question, then councillor Bishop.
Uh, we were speaking about the wording in the background information, um, with motion number five. And we were talking about, it's about strengthening partnerships between local councils and the state government. And we were emphasizing the need for mutual respect. And then we talked about right information, which is where motion number six has come from. But the wording which some of us were a bit uncomfortable with still remains in that background for motion number five. Um, in that last paragraph, it's got, um, blah, 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 a commitment to timely and frequent communications with the recognition of each other's roles and responsibilities. Um, but then it went on and I think the next bit is, it sounds a bit petty. Um, and it's not quite a professional background, um, I think our message is clear without those wordings in it. And I thought that was what we'd agreed to on Monday and that's why the right information one came about.
I think we agreed that the right to information was absent in that, but I don't know that we agreed to.
Oh, I, I thought it was all going in together, so.
Yeah, well, I, I actually thought that too, but it came, but, but with the legal advice, that's what, well, with, sorry, advice from the governance team, that's what's come back.
Okay, well, I, I'm uncomfortable with that wording, but then that's up to, um, the majority here.
Sure.
Um, the other one, I was a bit uncomfortable with the wording when I, um, read it in greater detail was motion number three. And we're talking about ways to use, um, previous offset plantings and previous, uh, conservation areas in retrospect, going forward instead of doing offsets now, um, we, we're going to use that. And I, I don't agree with that because that was all combined to developments and everything in those times and for certain reasons. And I don't think we can use it in.
I'll get, I'll get an opposite to respond, I think you're misinterpreting that, this is, this is in regards to provisions of the EPBC, um, where that.
Yeah, up until that last paragraph, all local governments who have prioritized best practice, I'm fine, it's after that.
I think.
I was a bit concerned about it and we do mention Heinemann Road as an example.
Yep.
And Heinemann Road was actually bought with environmental money.
Half of it was.
Seventy percent was.
Not all of it, but the area that's being used, the areas being used, proposed for recreational and sport for a regional sports facility was not bought with the environmental levy. But we did actually buy that land in conjunction, that environmental element, so I'll get Chris to respond.
Thirty, thirty percent, seventy percent environmental money for memory.
Yeah, thank you madam mayor, councillor for the question, in relation to the first comment, in terms of, uh, retrospective, uh, use of existing plantings done, it certainly would not be trying to use any offsets that were done in relation to a development. This is actually probably more recognizing the environmental stewardship that council has done off our own backs, so our one million trees program and other rehabilitation we've done of our own reserves, uh, across the city, so we certainly wouldn't be trying to use or double count anything that's been done for official, um, offsetting reasons, we're certainly not looking to double dip in that language. This we're going to be trying to get retrospective credit for, uh, areas of our city that we've voluntarily revegetated over the years and now in essence we don't have, um, large areas of our site that we can now do offsetting into if we wanted to do that, um, from today is, is the, the reference.
So does the EPPV say that we have to have it in our city or? No, so we could, we could use outside the city for offsets rather, and to do further plantings rather than using existing.
You absolutely can do as long as you're in the same biosphere and the ecology area for, for that makes sense.
It, it does, but, um, perhaps previously for the last hundred years, we haven't been a very good steward or, and I don't, I, I just don't like that wording, um.
I, um, well, I just, I, I think the problem is we've actually been too good. We've, we've planted up all of our areas and we now don't have anything, um, left to offset these types of requirements of the EPBC. So if you take a walk up to the top of, you know, the city and look out, it's covered in trees and so, um, any, any facility, a road, um, which will have a tree on it will now require us, well, under certain areas and. Yeah, um, it's, it will be a big issue, so I think we're not, we shouldn't be treated like a mining company that's taking, we're, we serve the same community, that's, that's the intent.
I'm actually happy with the motion, it's just the background wording that concerns me.
Sure. Um, councillor Bishop, I think you were next, councillor Hughes, questions?
Yeah.
Well, I'm try, I'd like, questions, thanks, councillor Bishop.
Yeah, thank you, just wondering, is, is this coming from offices or from councils, this particular motion?
I think offices crafted this.
Offices crafted, okay. Um, because I think, um, I'd like to also ask, when we procure land, do we do robust assessments to identify what might be matters of significant?
to identify what might be matters of significance? I know in the case of Burkdale, certainly was asking for that upfront, and in the case of Heinemann, did we do that upfront to make sure that we were apprised of the issues on the land?
I'd just remind councillors that the EPBC legislation changed in regards to the criteria post any of that acquisition or even planning, which is where we found ourselves, and a different application of how they are viewing offsets, so it's.
That was my question, so to go to what you've just suggested there, the EPA is trying to protect matters of national environmental significance, and it's important for us to be aware of where that exists, and that's the law. And so for us to adhere to the law is part of upholding best practice expectations, it's managing the vegetation. So I'm just asking, are we, is this seeking to do something that's trying to influence and change that process? Because I think what they're trying to do.
No, we're asking for clarity, councillor.
I understand, I appreciate that with the first item, with matters that change, but I'm just not, I'm not sure if we're trying to lead the EPBC down a different path when they're trying to protect matters of national significance.
The answer is no, but I'll get the CEO to respond, and then if anyone else wants to clarify.
Thanks, councillor Bishop, for the question. The question is about what due diligence do we do? Be fair to say, we're getting better and better at the due diligence that we do on land, but the issue, in particular with the EPBC challenges, is that certain species get put on the list, and they get put on after you might have done your due diligence. And so that then impacts how you apply offsets. And so what we're asking for, as Chris outlined, is because we've got significant coverage in the city, we are potentially looking at millions of dollars of ratepayer money being spent outside of the city to get projects and sometimes road widens progressed. And I guess this motion is asking to advocate for a fairer approach to how those offsets or how those plantings that we've done over the years could be applied under the rules of the EPBC. So there's two parts to your question, one was about the due diligence. Whenever we buy land, we're well aware of the things that we need to check. And I think, you know, we've done better in that over the last few years, but the rules change sometimes, or in this case, the species change sometimes. And so it doesn't matter how much you do, you've still got to deal with the situation as it is on the day.
councillor Hughes, question?
Thank you, mayor, for your indulgence. I just wanted to highlight to our councillors and the community the importance of this meeting, this Local Government Association Queensland Annual Conference, and the motions. And I wanted to highlight to our community and councillors, several years ago, a council put in a motion to this conference regarding our Annual Management Act, the cats and dogs legislation. I love that cats come before the dogs, so often we say dogs and cats, but in actual fact, it's real, it's cats and dogs. Thank you, George. I just wanted to note here for the meeting that the state government is following the motions, and we weren't the only council, but we wanted to lead councils. The state government established a task force in late twenty-two and early twenty-twenty-three to discuss issues and challenges with the current legislation. Whilst the task force is a higher level group facilitated by the minister, a sub-working group was established, which consists primarily of operational officers who work with this legislation each day. And I'm pleased to advise that Redland City Council has a representative on this working group. And I think it's really important, I wanted to share that with the meeting and our community. When we're raising these motions, we put a lot of effort and thought into them, as you can hear, but in actual fact, it is a bigger issue and a wider, broader issue, so thank you for letting me highlight that, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sure the LGAQ will be really pleased that you acknowledge the work they're doing advocacy in the local government space, so. And obviously, that's been a topical issue of late.
Thank you, mayor, it's really important.
Thank you. Any other speakers against or questions? Speaker against, councillor?
Thank you. Look, I totally support the importance of the going to the conference and the work that gets done. I do want to just take a moment to focus on the Environment, the EPBC Act, and the establishment of the EPA, which is the authority that's responding to the Samuel Report, which is trying to do what they can to manage these matters of national significance. I have to acknowledge that that should be our highest priority. Ecological sustainability on lands in our city should be a priority for council. It's definitely the purpose of the State Planning Act, and I think that this is sending a signal that is, I understand the merits and the intention, but I'm concerned with the direction that we will be going and the signal that we will send, and I think people will ask, did we apply those same stringent expectations on land that we intended to do development at the Burkdale Community Precinct and Heinemann Road from the outset? And did we accordingly manage our plans to limit where there may be impacts? And I think the EPA is actually encouraging us to do the right thing, and I think we could get better, and I think we should have got better, and I think we'd be looking at different plans at Burkdale, quite frankly, if we had done that more robustly, which I was asking for for quite some time prior to purchase and prior to starting master planning. So I would like us in future, before we commence master planning, for us to do this work, and I believe it would have made a difference in Burkdale's case and Heinemann Road, so.
Thank you.
I think for us to go down this pathway, sending a signal where we will probably be asked, and I'm just flagging that it's a concern for me, and I just want to flag that, thank you.
I'm actually going to get, I think Graham probably will be the best person or Chris to talk about the, because Burkdale has been raised, just to be really clear that all that due diligence was done, thank you. No, councillor, thank you, I have, thank you, I have the floor, and I ask you to abide by your standing orders that you want largesse on councillor, thank you, thank you councillor. I'll get the officers to respond, and I would also like to remind councillors that we, the EPA, yes, absolutely, that's their motivation, but we have a quadruple bottom line, which also means providing sporting fields and upgrading infrastructure for our growing community, which is growing at a very rapid rate. So, you know, there is that, that is that balance between making sure we've got people who can be healthy and playing on our sporting fields as well as protecting the environment, and I think we do a pretty good job of balancing that. But you might just want to clarify the extensive due diligence that was done in regards to acquire, in this case, Burkdale, and obviously Heinemann was a lot before that, and a very different scenario to acquiring it from a federal agency.
Thank you, madam mayor, so, yeah, just to clarify, we do the due diligence prior to acquisitions, and in the Burkdale case, that was extensive over many years. And I guess the key components with the purchase for Burkdale, as an example, were there was conditions which applied from the company to council in regards to what the expectations were around environmental management going forward, so they were well known to us. And I guess our perspective in regards to the master planning was that underpinned how we did that master planning, and it continues to underpin how we do that ongoing delivery against that master plan, including, you know, we don't believe we're triggered any kind of EPBC assessment at the Burkdale.
Any speakers for? I think just the interesting irony about that particular parcel of land is it appeared in the federal budget for four hundred houses, and yet we agreed very much on board to protect the natural significance of that property. I'll hand back to councillor Mackenzie to sum up.
Madam mayor, just understanding orders, we can direct questions to other councillors, so I just want to confirm that councillor Boglari is comfortable being a delegate representing these motions, given that she has raised some concerns with some of them?
I've got no problem with the actual motion, it's the background, I think we've had enough discussion then.
Right, I'll put the motion then, councillors, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Talty, councillor Edwards, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Williams, those against councillor Bishop, thank you. Next item, councillors, is fifteen point one, there is also a proposed motion, councillor Talty, you want to move them?
To leave it lay on the table, please, madam mayor, I'd like to propose that we leave it lay on the table.
So we have, we have a procedural motion that's been put to us to leave it lie on the table. This is secondary dwellings.
I was just wondering if the procedural motion was sent through to all councillors, because I've missed it.
It's a procedural motion, not the amended, the amended motion has. Well, there's a procedural motion there, councillors, did you want to explain, councillor Talty?
Yes, madam mayor, look, to my mind, and I understand the motivations behind and behind this, but we have a small problem, and to my mind, this is the equivalent of, you know, hitting a nut with a sledgehammer. We can work and we can refine this, and we can apply infrastructure charges and use them to deal with the problem that has actually arisen, but this is spreading the, this is changing.
Actually, I think I need, I'm going to take some advice, I think I need to get the motion live first.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we can take, sorry, my apologies councillor Talty. No, 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 I need to actually get the motion on the table before you can let it lie on the table. So, my apologies, I went back into reverse mode then. So can I just get the amended motion up? Move coun.
I'll move it so that discussions can go forward.
Thanks councillor Boglari, she's moving that as amended, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Okay, now if I could just, if I could ask councillor Talty about her procedural motion, then she'll have to move that one again.
I would like the officers to state why this came and what would be the implications of having it lie on the table, because I thought there were timeframes and reasons why we were actually doing it at this time.
It was a merril minute, but that doesn't mean it can't lie on the table. It was a merril minute that asked it to come back, if I recall correctly. So can I just now ask councillor Talty if you don't mind moving that procedural motion again? As, for the minutes, so that's all very clear, and then I'll ask you then to just explain your reason for it.
Okay, so I would officially now like to move that we leave this lay on the table. And the reason being, happy to bring it back probably in two meetings, but there are so many consequences to this that I think have not been considered. And there are many, and if it becomes a live motion, then I will argue quite strongly against it in its current form. But I believe that if we work on it and refine it, we can get something that will work for the community and answer the problem that we're trying to answer. But I don't believe this is the response that that would be in the best interests of the community. The real problem that we've got is that with recent state government changes, we have blocks of land mainly in the urban area that we would have expected should be moving toward duplex and triplex.
I'm just conscious we're starting to debate the issue now, so I've just, there's a question.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I think, other than, I don't want to have to re-prosecute it in two months if we're going to have it in two months, so. councillor Bishop, question?
Yeah, a couple of questions, first of all, councillor, why are we not at the meeting when we discussed it? Because that's when we could have raised some issues, and others did, and there had been some amendments. My question now to officers, if I may, because I don't want to put you on the spot, but hypothetical question, is to officers to ask, is there a concern with delays in relation to this? There are many moving parts that are taking place in terms of the state of South East Queensland Regional Plan. And I just think it would be worthwhile asking if there are impacts that will be caused, that's first question.
Thank you, madam mayor, through you to councillor Bishop and councillors. So we brought this report to you in response to changes the state government made to a planning regulation, I don't know, last year. There's two primary reasons for bringing this to you. The first is to control the potential impacts from large secondary dwellings, because with changes to the regulations, there are now no controls around size of secondary dwellings. And the second element is to ensure that infrastructure charges are levied for those larger secondary dwellings. The implication of deferring, and there's no statutory timeframe in terms of making a decision on this, the implications in terms of deferring a decision will simply be, and we've seen a number of secondary dwellings constructed in the city already, there will be ongoing secondary dwellings constructed that may have adversibility impacts and for which we would normally, we would seek to levy infrastructure charges. So any delay would mean that further secondary dwellings can be constructed without those controls in place. That's a decision for councillors.
Okay, I'm just, can we debate the lie on the table as, rather than the actual issue? Because that's what we're debating currently. Are councillors happy to give, for till? So can I just?
Was there any suggesting, as a number of councillors might be here, next meeting, to just do the meeting after that, that's all?
To lie on the table, I'll just take that vote. Those who support it lying on the table, please raise your hands, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Williams and councillor Edwards, those against? councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge and councillor Bishop, thank you. So we now come back to the motion that has been moved by councillor Boglari, so would you like to speak to it, thanks?
Oh, well, I was actually going to ask for the officers to say why the change is occurring, and I, where's David gone? Has he come? Oh, there you go, but you've already said that. But I also wanted to ask about the acceptable benchmarks which you've included in the amendment, and also how you're putting in the amenity and aesthetic policy, how that will be implemented in the interim to assist with the impacts that are happening, please, thank you.
Through you, madam mayor. So the, what we're looking to do is introduce some acceptable solutions, which are referred to as probable solutions in that amenity and aesthetics guideline. So we're looking at limiting the gross floor area. So at the moment, we're relying on the definition of secondary dwelling, which says that it has to be subordinate to the main dwelling on the lot, and also used in conjunction with. So that's all we've got. So when we're introducing these gross floor area limits, it will give us the ability to say, this is what we consider a secondary dwelling, and if you are going above that amount, you really are closing that gap between where you are, a secondary dwelling to a dual occupancy. So that's the main, the main item that we're introducing is that gross floor area limit, that it's seventy square metres where your lot size is under one thousand. And when your one thousand square metres are over in lot size, you can go up to a hundred square metres. So we have looked at all the other South East Queensland councils, what they have in their planning schemes. So we are the odd one out, we're the only ones that don't regulate the size of secondary dwellings. So other councils range from between forty-five square metres and a hundred and twenty square metres. So that's where we're approximately in the middle of that size range. The other thing we're looking to do is introduce a number of bedrooms, so a maximum of two bedrooms and one kitchen. So what this allows is that if you are doing a secondary dwelling, like what the old definition allowed to do, so one to two bedrooms, under those gross floor area limits, there won't be any application required under this amenity and aesthetics policy, and also there won't be any infrastructure charges levied. So we are trying to let those genuine secondary dwellings go through without any impediment. What we're trying to do is capture the ones that we're starting to see, which really should come in as a dual occupancy. So at the moment, we're not seeing them, they're just going through that building approval process, so that we see them once they're constructed.
And recently, Logan City Council had a bit of hard press because they implemented these infrastructure charges. But if we don't implement them, that means council still has those costs and normal rate payers, they're not paying for it anyway. Is that true, like the cost is still there and have to be paid?
Yes, through you, madam mayor. So basically, at dual occupancy, we do levy additional infrastructure charges. So when we do see, some of these secondary dwellings are coming in at four bedrooms, so generally that is something, so they've already got a four-bedroom house on the block, and a secondary dwelling of another four bedrooms being constructed. So that's generally equivalent to what we'd see for a dual occupancy, and we would, ordinarily, we already do charge them extra. So basically, if the occupancy of these lots is now over and above what is expected for a dwelling, for the equivalent use of infrastructure. of these lots is now over and above what is expected for a dwelling, for the, um, the equivalent use of infrastructure for that lot. So that's why we are saying if they, um, we, we don't wanna restrict those smaller ones, but if a large dual occupancy type development is proposed and approved, that's when we want to see those charges, um, charges levied so that, um, council in its, upgrading its infrastructure, those people that are developing that are paying rather than the wider community.
Speaker against? Councillor Talty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, I am a speaker against and I, I understand and I accept the reasons given. And it, it is a problem in the urban area when you've got a lot which is perhaps eight hundred square metres or, and you would expect that that would go to a, a possibly duplex or triplex and have a body corporate apply. And if we can find a way through planning scheme changes to apply infrastructure charges in those circumstances, whether they choose to do that or they choose to circumnavigate the, through those mo-, matters, I'm more than happy to support it. But the, the matter as it stands at the moment, um, we, we have a current, we, up until this time, for the last at least twenty years, we have had a, a vol-, if you like, voluntary, um, infrastructure fee where we've said, well, you can build a secondary dwelling if it's for family, but if it's in, for non-family and you're going to rent it out, then it would attract an infrastructure fee. So theoretically, any secondary dwelling in the last twenty years that people were going to rent out to a non-family member was required to pay infrastructure charges. The amount of infrastructure charges that we have collected through that fee is zero. No one has ever paid that. And no one will pay this either, because it won't work. Under the, and, and I'll ask the officers, I will ask the, I will ask through you for the officers to clarify these things. So, and I understand at the moment, uh, if you build a secondary dwelling and the secondary dwelling is larger or than the first dwelling, then it automatically becomes the primary dwelling and the smaller dwelling becomes the secondary dwelling. So that's, I don't think, going to change. Uh, we have tried applying bedrooms as a measure. We've had bedrooms as a measure on the Simbi Islands for decades and it does not work. We have now, uh, resorted to telling people how wide their doorways need to be in order to try to pretend it's not a bedroom. People simply build other rooms. They call them something else or they change the, the layout of the room. And again, they will not be paying infrastructure charges based on bedrooms. The square meterage, um, I don't agree with that either. Um, it's dual occupancies in the urban area that's the problem. And we need to look at how we can, um, apply charges in those circumstances without impacting all of those other people. As, as the officers have said, that we, we're not really trying to capture those, those other people who are doing those, those family reunification, um, purposes. In doing this, we're actually taking away the, the family reunification process. And so under building, under the, under the state building regulation, all this will do is people will resort to the, what we got rid of several years ago. And as soon as the secondary dwelling is linked to the primary dwelling with some kind of walkway, a shared pool area, whatever you wanna call it, it becomes an extension to the primary dwelling, not a secondary dwelling. And therefore, um, again, will not have this apply. There are what, this, this will not result in any infrastructure charges being collected. So it, I would like the officers to explain the many ways that people will be able to circumvent this by simply connecting the two dwellings. Well, we need to find another way to do it. If they, if they simply connect the two dwellings, it becomes a house extension and then the applica-, and then the, the infrastructure charges won't apply.
I think, yeah, I think that there's a few probably, um, points that David will make in regards to that, but bearing in mind that people have a choice between a dual occupancy and a secondary dwelling. And the secondary dwelling has now been completely, um, manipulated by the state government's changes to the Planning Act, which now takes people away from doing dual occupancies and encourages secondary dwellings. That's really the emphasis.
Which I accept is a problem from our perspective. However, we're also supposed to be supporting the intent of the state in, um, providing extra housing. And I don't believe this does that either.
I, I, yes, I'll, I'll let the officer respond to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So through you to councillor Talty and councillors. Um, uh, officers believe that this is still delivering on the intent of the state, which is to assist with providing additional housing, affordable housing, um, for those small-scale granny flat or teenage retreat type, type of properties. Um, to, to go back to the, um, scenario before the change to the regulation, we've never had a voluntary policy for infrastructure contributions. What we had previously was secondary dwelling, uh, required the occupants to be part of the same household. So if they were part of the same household, we didn't levy any infrastructure charges because it met the definition of secondary dwelling. If it wasn't the same household, then it became dual occupancy and we would levy a charge. So prior to the change in legislation, same household, two dwellings, no charge. Uh, if it wasn't a single household, it was rented out to somebody else, it became a dual occupancy in terms of definition and we would levy a charge. The change to the regulation last year have removed that requirement for it to be a single household. Um, so what we're suggesting is that, um, we don't want to capture those genuine granny flat, teenage retreat type scenarios. They can still occur with no charge levy. What we're seeking to, um, to address is the amenity impacts from those larger, effectively dual occupancy type developments and, um, that have an impact upon our infrastructure. So that's the difference between the two. Um, come to the point of whether somebody could construct, uh, a secondary dwelling and attach it to the main dwelling? Yes, they could. The definition of secondary dwelling doesn't require them to be attached or detached. It could be either scenario. It still comes down to whether they meet the definition of secondary dwelling, which is subordinate to the principal dwelling. Um, but as I said, the main thing we need to capture is the, the amenity impacts and the impacts upon infrastructure from those larger dual occupancy type, uh, scenarios.
Speaker for? Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, thank you. Um, having, uh, been involved in discussions regarding, um, secondary dwellings as, um, auxiliary units and requesting officers to look at a, a change, then seeing the state in September last year, was it September? Uh, yes, it was September twenty twenty-two, um, that, that effectively has changed the entire landscape for how these might be implemented. I really support this amenity and aesthetics policy that's being proposed, um, because I think it really adds consistency and gives regularity. I think that the likelihood of, uh, a, a series of ad hoc, uh, adoptions over the next few months slash years is really concerning potentially. And I think what we're trying to do with this councillor Talty, from the discussions that we've had and the workshops that we've shared together, is, um, is to actually be in the, on the front foot with the intention for the sort of tone that we wanna set, so that on a se-, on a seven hundred square metre lot, we are talking about no less than three hundred and fifty per dwelling. And I think that sets an important precedent for the sort of expectation, because we don't know what the state might come in with their housing policy. But I think from discussions with officers, and thanks also to Officer, um, Janice, who's, um, who, who's been very helpful, uh, I think officers have been really due diligent and they've done everything possible. Of course, there are gonna be impacts, but this is trying to, uh, minimise the amenity and aesthetics impact on residents. And I think that's merit worthy. Of course, there will be issues going forward, but this is starting a process that will go through a ministerial review and there's a long journey to go. So changes that need to be made, hopefully can and will be made, um, but I think it's moving in the right direction. So, um.
To be clear, there are two parts to it. One is to commence a major amendment. The other one is to adopt the, adopt the new charges, which starts in September. So that is more-
Indeed, and, and, and that also has got some, you know, challenges associated with it, and I acknowledge and, and respect that, but I also think that we need to be clear.
That, that process will occur in September.
That's right. And, and the other quest-, I'd like to ask this question in relation to this item, i-, is there not a material connection between this and some of the intent going forward with the next item, which is for, uh, fifteen point two, which is potential options to support the delivery of our affordable housing? There is some line of sight between these things, particularly to do with what we used to call auxiliary units, which is those smaller units. I think this is important that we have this aligned. That's, that's a question. Does, will that have a relevance to this next item coming up, fifteen point two? Question to officers.
I guess there is some, uh, some alignment, councillor, insofar as, um, we are not looking to capture those small, uh, granny flat type, um, secondary dwellings. And those secondary dwellings can be rented out to anybody. So, um, so that does go some way to addressing the issue of affordable housing.
And, and under the act, a secondary, a secondary dwelling now, um, um, doesn't have to, like, under the act that we don't have any, we don't have any oversight of that at all. It can be rented to anybody. All we're saying is if it's over the size, over the size of the primary, um, dwelling, or if in fact it's, doesn't meet those criteria, then there is an infrastructure.
And in advocating for this item, uh, motion, um, uh, as, as proposed by the officers, it's giving us clarity around what the actual definition is. And I think that helps with the next item, uh, fifteen point two, in relation to auxiliary units or those smaller units, because it actually, unless it's over two bedrooms or over seventy on a less than one thousand square metre lot, or over a hundred on a one thousand and above square metre lot, the definition is very clear if we adopt this. So I think that's important, simple to amenity and aesthetics.
Speaker against? Uh, speaker against? We've got questions. Speaker against or?
I'm gonna speak against it, actually. Um, I tend to agree with, um, some of the issues that councillor Talty has raised. And I, I completely agree that we need to have an aesthetics policy and guideline, especially for the urban areas. And on those lots that are under a thousand square metres, but I know personally in my division, I have, um, residents living on ten thousand plus square metres. Um, mult-, multiple of them have expressed to me that they have intentions of building a secondary dwelling because their children can't afford to buy land, so they're just gonna put a house, um, up the back, um, some at the front. And there is a difference between a thousand square metres and ten thousand square metres or twenty-five acres, because we do have a lot of those properties in the rural area. And I don't think that, um, a hundred square metre house is really going to affect the aesthetics of those areas. I think, and those people that are on those rural areas too also don't have sewerage systems, so they're also having to put in sewerage system for those houses. Um, I, I agree that we need to have this policy, but I think it just needs refining so that we're actually affecting the change that we want to in the urban area where it's becoming a problem. And there are areas in my division where it has become a problem, where the secondary dwelling has absolutely dwarfed, um, the front property and virtually the whole block is covered in, in dwellings now. But that's not occurring in the rural area. So I believe that if we bring this in for the rural areas and on those extremely large lots, certainly my rural property or rural definitions, but they're in the urban footprint, um, those people who would not have had to pay infrastructure charges beforehand because they work for family are now going to have to pay infrastructure charges and can only build a house that's only got two bedrooms and one kitchen for possibly a growing family. Um, additionally, some of those houses in the rural area are already small. The main house is already small. Um, I certainly know of a couple of people who have bought, um, acreage out in Mount Cotton. Um, the primary house is very small, so they're building a big house at the back, um, and the parents are actually gonna live in the front one. Um, so they would then be paying an extra, you know, thirty thousand dollars to build themselves a big house for, you know, the, the, the family that has bought it. Um, I don't believe that this is, I, I think that this is just gonna affect the rural area or those on rural lots in the urban area with too much and that we should need to adjust the wording in it so that it's probably for the, goes in the urban footprint.
Can I just ask officers in regards to the planning process, if you have got a large lot and you have a small dwelling on it, can you allocate that existing dwelling to be a secondary dwelling? I'm just, well, for the small, normally, I mean, if they're-
I mean, there may always be the exception to the rule, and that's something that we'd have to look at on a case-by-case basis, because it's always, you know, a question of fact and degree. But if any resident has got a question in that sort of regard, then, you know, we have a team of people that can assist them with those inquiries, because it may well be the case that the primary dwelling could become secondary, but it just depends upon the circumstances.
They need, we need, still need to meet the criteria. Yeah. Speaker for? We have some questions. Councillor Hughes, councillor Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Through yourself to our officer Jeans. And regarding the attachment five, which is the Redlon City Council adopted infrastructure charges resolution, coming into effect on the first of September, I wanted to seek clarity on the figures that are in the, the attachment. There, obviously, there's several pages of them, um, and, and how we came about those figures. Thank you.
Uh, thank you councillor Hughes for the question. So those figures are actually provided by the state government. These are the charges that are regulated through the planning regulation. Um, typically, they are indexed and on a yearly basis, um, the charge increases. Uh, we haven't yet seen that indexed charge for this financial year. Uh, we anticipate that will come, but we haven't seen it yet. But those charges, those figures are actually provided by state government.
Uh, councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Through you to, to the officer. I'm just wondering about the, uh, and I'll, I'll quickly note that these were state government changes, twenty third of September, without consultation with local government. So just a quick plea to please come and chat to us ahead of time. But my question is, um, what obligation, uh, through to the private certifiers, may they be to assist the applicants and councils with, um, uh, what is the primary dwelling and what is the secondary dwelling? And, uh, um, so that every, any application that comes to council has already gone through the professional and ethical standards of private certifiers, so that, uh, council officers can be assured that this is, the application is not a house masquerading as a cubby house, um, uh, and is there an obligation on the private certifiers to assist professionally or ethically?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so this, the certifier does have to make a call, um, and they do have to make sure the development meets tho-, the, uh, the definitions. Um, the problem we have is the definition of secondary dwelling versus the definition of, of dual occupancy. It can be quite a subjective call about what's subordinate to. So for example, if you already had a large five-bedroom house that was, um, two-story and you wanted to do a four-bedroom two-story secondary dwelling, which was fifty square metres less, is that subordinate to? So that's, that's the issue we have. One certifier will, um, make a different call on that compared to potentially what a council officer would make, um, or another certifier. So that's why we want to bring some, um, provisions into the scheme. So that outlines what we believe, um, is suitable as a secondary dwelling. Uh, and it doesn't really matter the size of the house, um, the actual use, um, i-, i-, it's the use. So once you're two full dwellings on a lot, you're a dual occupancy. So it's just, it's, um, it's, I suppose, allowing people, they can still go over that seventy square metres through the application process. And we would be able to, through that application process, we would be able to assess the impacts, assess the certain circumstances that they're applying under and make a determination. Uh, but at the moment, um, what we are seeing is that certifiers are approving what we would call a dual occupancy, a secondary dwelling.
With your indulgence, just a quick follow-up on, uh, with officer Jeans, but just on, and with respect to some of the councillors who are speaking against, in the refining of this, there will be an opportunity through public engagement to, uh, uh, bring things back and modify as required, I assume.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so basically the amenity and aesthetics guideline and policy, um, does start now. So that's a short-term, um, fix for what we are seeing, um, on the ground happening. So the major amendment process, what the resolution is for today is to commence that process. So that involves sending it to the state government to commence state interest review. Once the state government, um, and if they do, if they support that, it will come back to us again to make a decision about whether or not to go to a community consultation. And through that process, there is potential to change, um, change what provisions we're doing. There is also potential to not go ahead with it at that time as well.
Just wanted to make a, get a question answered, to make some clarity in regards to comments made in regards to water and wastewater infrastructure charges on rural lots, but they don't pay them if they don't have, if they have their own facilities. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would think, uh, that they do get a discounted rate. So the infrastructure charge covers five different types of infrastructure. So you, if you're not connected to our water system or our sewerage system, you wouldn't be paying for those components of the infrastructure charge.
Okay, speaker, oh, so speaker against. No more, no other questions? Yeah, I know. Um, I just, oh, a question, councillor Talty?
Uh, yes, if I could, through you to the officers, Madam Mayor. So, um, if we have a property-
Uh, yes, if I could, through you, to the officers, Madam Mayor. So, um, if we have a property A that currently has a secondary dwelling, and they choose then to go through a certifier and extend that secondary dwelling to make it larger, uh, no fee will apply. If you have someone who builds a secondary dwelling larger than the meterage noted, then fees will apply. If that person chooses to put plans through council to build a secondary dwelling under the square meterage, then no fees will apply. They can then come back in twelve months and go through a certifier with no notice to council and extend it, and no fees will apply. So first of all, is that correct? Secondly?
Answer to that first.
Okay.
Through you.
Uh, it suggested it's probably the answer is yes, that would be the case.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, it does, it's a gross floor area limit. So if you already have a sixty-square-meter secondary dwelling that was approved under those provisions, if you did double that, then you would be increasing your gross floor area, and you would be triggered to the application process for the extension.
Certifier would recommend it?
But my understanding is that we have no oversight of building regulation, and certifiers do that, so how would, why would we?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, they're through, it's through the planning regulation. So if we have an amenity aesthetics policy and guideline in place, the certifier has to refer the building application to council, um, for approval before they can issue their approval. So it's, uh, their responsibility to check that amenity and aesthetics policy and make sure the approv- the development complies with that before they issue building approval.
And is that going to apply to both secondary dwellings that exist prior to that policy and secondary dwellings after?
If the gross floor area goes above, so if they had a fifty-square-meter and now they wanna double that, go to a hundred, then it would be triggered, even if they were built prior to.
Okay, but people who have already built two houses don't have that.
Okay. Think, well, I think that the officer said that they do.
But just to be clear, the, the policy wouldn't apply retrospectively. So if somebody already has a secondary dwelling, that's, that's lawful, that's in place. Um, it's if they were looking to extend it to go above those gross floor area, then it would be captured, but. And I, so, so it doesn't apply retrospectively. So if somebody has a fifty-square-meter dwelling house now, or a hundred-square-meter dwelling house now, a secondary dwelling, that, that's awful. But if they have, for example, a fifty-square-meter secondary dwelling, and after the policy comes into effect, they wanted to increase it to a hundred, that would be captured.
Yeah, that's, so that's.
So that has the potential for someone adding a single bedroom to pay a thirty thousand dollar, uh, infrastructure charge.
Depen- depending on, depending on what requirements there are in the urban area, we'd, we'd, we'd be likely around that if it's in the, yeah.
Okay. And, and as I've said previously, you know, on, in the urban area, you've got space, space issues, you've got coverage issues, et cetera. Um, these, uh, fees are proposed through this motion to commence.
For, sorry, sorry, further question? That was a question.
Yes, first of September. Yeah, so there is no opportunity to revise that. Okay. Would, would there be any, I will be far less concerned about this if the, if that, uh, over one thousand square meters, uh, had, had a bracket of, say, one thousand square meters to ten thousand square meters. That would at least limit the impact of this to the areas with a problem.
Councillors?
Is that something that we could do?
Or can off, can officers say, is that, is that possible?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that would be possible. So we could make changes to attachments two and four, I believe it would be. Uh, so that would be an acceptable outcome. So potentially, where we say, um, we could say we're in the rural zone and over ten thousand square meters, there's a different, um, gross floor area on it.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose that, that be an amendment to this motion.
It's allowed to propose an amendment, so just speak, be, give me a second. Um, can we, can we get some questions prior to that being put, that amendment? Councillor Boglari, you had a question?
Um, thank you, Jenison. And I, I believe anything can be proposed, but what's the actual impact then? Are we then allowing secondary dwellings on our larger lots, um, over ten thousand, um, with, with what constraints and what infrastructure charges? Because they'll be second, um, houses, but they, they could be second houses, basically, couldn't they?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, again, it's that balance between a very dual occupancy starts, starts with a secondary dwelling. Um, the rural zone will have less of the amenity impacts that we're concerned about, um, in, in the, um, urban area. Um, but it will, depending on, again, how it's designed, I mean, that's, that's the difficulty, is that, um, some of these secondary dwellings that are large, on a large, large block, um, may be designed so that it's not obvious that it's a secondary dwelling. Um, if it is to be used by family members and it is close to that, um, main dwelling, that may help as well. Some of the planning schemes on the rural lots do have a criteria to say potentially that the house has to be within twenty meters of the main dwelling, um, to keep out amenity, um, aspects of a developed part of the block where the, the additional.
And what is the infrastructure charges?
Infrastructure charges, well, we would potentially, if, we want to increase the gross floor area limit, so there's two triggers to charge infrastructure charges under the proposed, um, changes here. So one is the gross floor area, and one is if you go over that two-bedroom, one-kitchen limit. So potentially, if there are changes for the rural zone, um, on large lots with gross floor area limit, we may also want to consider number of bedroom allowance, because at the moment, both of those things are triggers. So if you do, let's say, a hundred and thirty square meter is the allowance for the larger blocks, but someone wants to do a three-bedroom dwelling in that, then they would still be charged under the.
Question, councillor, you should be had a question. Could I see your hand go up? Well, councillor Talty's proposed an, an amendment to the motion. Um, I'm assuming we don't have anything in, in writing. We don't know, we don't know what that is just yet. So ba- basically, um, councillors, do you want to, once again, let this lie on the table until we can get that sorted, bring it back at the end of the meeting? Yeah? So if I get a motion just to let it lie on the table till the end of the meeting, so that we can have a, um, an amendment put forward for councillors' consideration, so they know what they're debating, um.
Sorry, if I may, in that amendment, the, um, officers will then have to do their own, um, acceptable outcomes and performance outcomes here on lots over ten thousand. Is that it?
Yeah, or we could let it lie on the table till next meeting even, frankly, if you wanted to have more time. David?
Through.
No, well, we have, this is a different type of amendment, though.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think, um, if councillors are considering changes to the, um, to the policy, I think we'd need to go and give that bit of thought and take some time just to work that through, um, just so we don't have anything that trips us up along the way. So I would suggest we need more than an hour or two.
Can I just, can I? Yeah, okay, all right, appreciate that. So in which case, um, if, if councillors would like to allow that process to occur and give officers time to do it, then there could be another motion to let it lie on the table to get it right. Um, well, can, we have a, we have a motion to let it lie on the table from councillor Mackenzie. Can I just? Until next meeting. I think, I, I think there is some urgency, we, in regards to making sure that we aren't losing the opportunity to have dual occupancies, um, cap- captured. So if I can, um, just test the room on letting it lie on the table till, for a month, till next meeting?
Aye.
So I went.
Microphone.
Sorry, Mark, sorry, Mark, sorry, councillor Edwards. Just wanna make sure that before we send the officers away, if it does get up to lie on the table, that we get the right information for them to come back with.
Hmm, that's probably what I was asking clarity on, what was actually gonna be included and in what we're lying it on the table for, plus, could the policy still go through?
No.
So they can start that, or was it gonna have to all be?
David, David's. Yeah. So we have a, we have a live motion to lie on the table, and we'll, obviously, it's probably worth coming back for another briefing with councillors prior to that, coming to that meeting, because I think we need to get that clarity. Um, so if I can just put the motion that it lies on the table until the August meeting, um, we'll see how we, we'll see how we fare with that on the floor right now. Can I just put that motion, thanks? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? All right, those in favor, councillor Mitchell, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Boglari, councillor Hewlett, and councillor Bishop, thank you. Oh, and councillor Edwards, my apologies, is for. Um, and just before we go on to the, the next item, you'll probably, it'll come to your attention that there is a story in today's, um, Courier-Meal in regards to Redlands, more Logan and Morton on similar topics. Um, and important that you understand that those infrastructure charges are set by the state government, not by council. Just, I'll bring that to your attention, mate. On room accommodation, actually. All right, um, next item, uh, is fifteen point two. Um, we ha- also have an updated attachment. Move councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Talty. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mackenzie?
Um, these changes have been brought about, obviously, because there's some, a shortage of housing in southeast Queensland, um, and councillors looking at some options that we can consider in order to facilitate, um, some additional housing in the area. Um, there's just been some amendments that, um, councillor Jean, uh, Officer Jean sent around last night, I believe he sent it out. Um, it, because it, obviously, we had some concerns regarding, um, temporary accommodation caravans, um, small, uh, tiny homes on large, large lots. So just clarifying that we were going to change our local law for a maximum period of two years, um. Is that it? Yes. I believe those changes were in line with what council laws discussed on Monday, and just the clarity on, um, the community housing as well.
Uh, thank you. Just while the mayor, oh, just while the mayor's out of the office, I'll just, um, facilitate. So, you have a speaker against? Oh, okay, thank you, councillor Hughes. Uh, s- s- thank you, deputy mayor. In speaking against, uh, it's been alluded to, um, as we moved this, uh, a, a amended, uh, rec- officer's recommendation for a, a motion, that the, the caravans and, and motorhomes be made available for temporary residential accommodation, and it was, uh, initially just the wording temporary. We've got there the, the two years as an option. I'm greatly concerned that owners of the, the larger properties and owners of the wheeled motorhomes, caravans, have become ve- very complacent in the fact that they have an opportunity for two years to be staying at someone's place. We understand the housing crisis. Um, talking to, um, uh, many in our community daily on, on the problems that we have to help people. We s- we understand that, but we know that there's some naughty people on, on every occasion. This is not an opportunity for landowners that have the bigger blocks of land that can home up to five vans, I think it says in the, the actual wording, um, for a period of up to two years. So I'm really concerned about how we're going to word this local law. I do not want people to move in and come two, two years and two months. You, guys, you now need to move on. Oh, but we've been here for, forever. You're changing the, the rules, council's horrible, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a long-term conversation. This is a short-term opportunity to help those really in need. So in speaking against, I'm just really emphasizing and just so not happy, I'm worried about what this implication's going to be. Thank you, councillor Hughes. I might ask an officer, if we could, to, uh, provide us some insight into how they will, would manage that and when the time comes?
Thank you, councillor Talty and councillor Hughes. Um, so what we've noted in the report is that, um, reviewing the local law does require a further body of work, and establishing a policy on the local law requires a further body of work. And that body of work, um, involves, uh, conducting an audit of similar, I guess, policy initiatives that, that have been implemented elsewhere, and understanding the issues that have arisen, and potential ways that through a permitting system, we may alleviate the adverse impacts. Um, I take your point, however, that there may be landowners that would seek to continue this initiative beyond the two-year period. Um, and I guess the, one of the ways that we could go about, um, limiting, I guess, the people that, um, would otherwise say, oh, you've, you've caught me by surprise here, I wasn't ready for it. Through the permitting system and, um, our compliance processes, we could have a system in place whereby we provide, say, from the twelve-month period to the end of the two-year period, repeated notices to the landowners that have submitted and been approved for permitting, that, you know, the, um, time for this temporary arrangement is approaching the end. Um, and, and, you know, we could do that, um, every three months until the end of the two-year period. Um, and then it would be, you know, I think in this, the, the way the amendment is worded, it's abundantly clear that it is a temporary measure to address the affording of, of affordable, or the housing crisis that exists now. Um, so that is abundantly clear in the, um, resolution, um, that's put forward by council officers. However, um, yeah, as you say, there are gonna be people that may perhaps try and skirt the laws, and that's one, I guess, approach we could utilize um, to limit the potential negative consequences which may arise should landowners seek to continue those arrangements beyond the two-year period which we're intending to establish it for.
The, the, yes, certainly. Uh, thank you, deputy mayor. Um, through you, uh, uh, thank you, um, to our officers, thank you, Dean. With the compliance of the changing of the local law, uh, and obviously, we're looking in, in a couple of, of years, what would be the consequence of a landowner saying, well, look, we've been doing it for two years, we've got an income of a thousand bucks a week, thank you very much, council, and we're a good corporate citizen, we're helping old mate down the road. How are we going to comp- but to make this compliance, um, how are we going to be able to say, look, honestly, you've got to move on? Like, truly, how are we gonna do this? We're, we're all over the papers, all over, you know, our favorite current affairs programs, the council throwing these poor souls to the road. We, 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 I, I can't emphasize enough that council is trying to do the right thing here by helping people, but we, we need to be able to enforce these compliance issues. It's always an issue, the enforcement of compliance. To say it's there in local law, number one or number four, but we need to be able to make it real. Uh, I'm not sure that.
Councillor, you're speaking against. Sorry, I'm back.
Sorry, I'll let you be back.
But just big, I'm just back to your standing orders, councillors. You're either speaking against, or you just got a question?
If, if I, uh, we, we didn't have any speakers against, so we went to questions. Oh, sorry, you did speak against. Apologies, yes, you did.
All right, thank you.
If I can, councillor Bishop's got a question.
I think the officer's gonna respond firstly to councillor Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so a comment, really. Um, so the recommendation is to consider this temporary policy for two years. If at the, um, if we're getting close to two years and the expiry is, expiry of the policy, you could, if you wish, choose to extend this. If there is a continuing housing crisis, you could choose to extend it. Um, but I think, you know, for me, it comes down to a question of risk. So, um, you know, there's a risk of doing nothing, because we have a housing crisis, we know, not just in Redlands, but, you know, elsewhere across the, the, the country. Um, so it's a question of risk of doing nothing versus the risk of somebody not wanting to move out at the end of two years. So that's just a question for you to, to consider in your deliberations.
Question, councillor Bishop?
Again, I'll, I'll take the opportunity, if I may, to speak for, and then ask my questions during that, that's good. I think that's, is that okay? Or would you like to ask a question?
Well, I did actually, I did actually have councillor Mitchell that wanted to speak for it, and I was told that you were asking a question, so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll ask my questions then. Um, pardon?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let councillor Mitchell speak for, and then you can ask your questions. Is that okay? Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councillor Bishop, for that. Um, Redlands City Council didn't create a housing crisis, but it's here nevertheless, and, um, uh, in fact, council's met every requirement along the way that we've been asked to do. But we do wanna be part of the solution, uh, because it is a big problem, and, uh, we wanna respond in a big-hearted and open way. Uh, but with the full awareness of monitoring all those practical issues such as compliance, uh, but also perhaps some of the political fallout, as councillor uses. uh, but also perhaps some of the political fallout, as councillor Hughes has mentioned, that may come from trying to do the right thing, uh, in the end. But I'd like to point to, speaking for it, want to speak to, to broaden the options that are in front of us here, to point those out. It's not all about, um, a, a few caravans, uh, perhaps out on similar properties, although that is one of the possible things. Some of our responses include just getting out of, getting out of the way, as sometimes the businesses would say, where we're going to expedite our assessment timeframes, um, to smooth the way out a few drops of oil on those at point seven. Point six, we're going to provide free access to council's DA process for community, uh, housing providers of affordable housing. So that's fantastic and that also helps progress those sort of applications along with the less barriers. Point five, we're going to establish an affordable, houseable policy with discounted DA application fees, uh, again, for community housing providers. So those things are going to enable that not-for-profit industry and, and maybe some for-profits to get on with helping to solve those local issues. Point four, council's going to look at its, um, own land holdings to see if it can partner with those housing providers. We then get to, uh, the issue that took up a bit of the debate on those temporary solutions on the rural properties and that hopefully can be well managed and well monitored and well looked after into the future. Uh, and then we, we go on further at points two and one to support freehold titling, uh, in the LDMR and MDR zones and dual occupancies on seven hundred meter lots. So just pointing to the breadth of responses that we're providing and, um, there may indeed be future consequences and some knock-on effects, uh, but we, we move forward with our eyes open and with the intent of a big-hearted response to a big problem that council didn't create, but we certainly have you part of the solution for those people moving to our area. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Mitchell, sorry councillor Bishop, are you speaking ag- against, against?
Uh, I agree a hundred percent with everything councillor Hughes has said and, uh, I think there is some merit in this. Um, but I, like councillor Hughes, I'm very concerned with option, option three, um. At a community meeting on Tuesday night, the CEO, uh, was introduced as being, uh, sorry, a CEO who is highly skilled in Redlands Community Social Housing stated eighty percent of people with, uh, requiring social housing met the criteria of mental health or substance abuse. So eighty percent is a huge number and I was going to ask a question, but you answered it. Um, you, if we're still in a crisis in two years' time and, uh, these people still do not have adequate housing, how do we, um, uh, just to extend it is not good enough. How do we move people out of temporary caravan wheeled vehicles that are in this situation of mental health and, and if this is the case, and that's what we were told, we could have a major problem because we are not skilled to deal with these social problems. So I, I am going to not support this at the, this present time, I could change my mind, but right now I'm going with councillor Hughes, I'm major concern.
I just got, get officers to explain what people actually would use affordable housing, because I think there might be some, um, confusion, I suppose, to, you know, there, there are people who would be, um, emergency service operators, nurses, doctors, aged care in our, in our, that probably can't afford to buy a house near where they work. I just wanted to make sure there's, there's, there is a distinction between social housing and affordable housing, um, so I just wanted to make that clear. I think we had that discussion in some of the, um, workshops, but I, I just wanted to, for the community to understand, there is that distinct difference.
Yeah, so there is a definition for affordable housing in the planning regulation, um, and it speaks to the capacity of a household, um, to provide for their housing needs and I think the nominal figure is thirty percent of gross household out. Yeah, thirty percent of gross household income is provided, um, contributed to housing. So for it to be classified as affordable housing to meet that definition under the planning regulation, there is a, uh, I was, I guess, a specific quantifiable measure that must be met. Then there is, um, the question, so there's talk about, uh, what is, what is public housing? So public housing is housing that is provided generally, uh, by the state government. Um, and it can provide, um, public housing to a number of entities, it can, um, there, there, the eligibility criteria, um, for, for entering public housing is administered by the state government. Um, and I think I spoke to in the workshopping sessions that as we, uh, as of, um, thirtieth of June twenty twenty-two, so at the end of last year, there were twenty-seven thousand people on the social housing register that were deemed eligible for access to social housing and nine hundred and thirty-four of those people are seeking, um, to obtain access to social housing in, in the Redlands. Um, so ho- hopefully that answers your question, so there's a specific quantifiable measure that's in. Does it? Councillor Beridge, I might hand back to.
Been asking for clarity because, um, social housing or public housing, which would accommodate some of the, I guess, demographic that was being referred to, is very different to affordable housing, which is generally people who, um, you know, have, have a job, often have a job.
Yes, that's right.
Just can't afford, um, somewhere to live.
Yeah, that's right. So affordable housing caters for a broad, broad spectrum of people and it, and often, you know, um, affordable housing i- is ideally targeted to be made available to those people that are entering, of course, they might be, um, nurses that have just graduated, so they have a diminished income, um, and a, a, a reduced capacity to enter, I guess, the, the, um, the, the private housing market to, uh, obtain a mortgage and purchase housing. So they might use, um, social housing, or sorry, they might use, uh, affordable housing as a step onto the property ladder. Um, and then it allows them to, I guess, commit a limited amount of their funding towards housing, um, save up money and then hopefully move along that housing continuum and move into the, um, private rental market or ideally purchase their own home in the longer term.
Councillor, councillor Boglari, you want to speak for? Uh, well, back in line, we'll get the questions, because we're just going for and against. Sorry, you're going to speak for, you had a question before, so I'm just a bit confused.
Yeah, and then I said I would like to speak for and use that as my chance to ask a question, so unless councillor Boglari had a hand up for?
No, you had yours up first for a question, but I'm happy for you to proceed to speak for, I just need, I came in the room and I was told you're asking a question, so.
Yeah, and then when I had the chance, I said I would speak for, so, thank you. Um, question to officers, just as I commenced, to ask, um, do we anticipate that there will be more changes proposed as part of the housing strategy that the state is, is looking at, uh, in terms of affordability?
Yes, uh, we.
Question, just to clarify, I had a question from an officer, councillor across the room.
Yeah, just for clarity by, by you madam mayor, we do anticipate that when the state government, um, completes the housing strategy for the Redlands coast, there will be further changes and we would anticipate that they potentially through a ministerial direction would, um, direct us to make amendments to city plan.
Thank you.
We would reasonably.
Just to add to that, there was a statement made by the, um, Minister Scanlon on the weekend, um, take it with grain of salt, it was in the Courier Mail, that actually said that they will be creating targets for social and affordable housing, um, for councils.
Back to, I'm speaking for, thank you. Um, I think it's important that we acknowledge that this crisis is affecting everyone everywhere. It's not something that council normally gets involved with provision of housing, so it is very much a state issue. Uh, and it's also a, the federal government has also suggested that they are looking to get involved in a housing strategy at a national level and that will obviously have flow-on effects to all councils. So there's a big movable feast in this space and I think it's very important that we do not look to solve all of these problems. It's not something that naturally sits with council. I think this is, I, I, I'm really cl- have wanted to be very clear about the fact that this is, particularly relation to point three, it's temporary, because it's not our responsibility to take this up going forward. This is a temporary attempt to try to do something for our community on behalf of those residents who are willing to do something and the, the attempt to try and make sure that the, the, there will be limits and local laws permitting a one-year with a review going into the second year and thanks to officers for their discussions about clarifying that. It's going to be very important that we, um, I think we're going to have more discussions about the body of work that's going to be related and that will come back to us by October. I think it's really important that we're clear, that we send a signal that we want to go in this direction in support of our community ahead of the state and federal government so that we don't have things forced upon us that are against our will. Um, now, that's going to be challenging, but I think we should, we need to suggest that we're doing something, I think this is partway toward that. It might not be perfect, but I think it's important that we do do something. Another question with relation to point four, I understand the merit of council reviewing our land holdings and identifying opportunities to deliver affordable rental housing through partnering with community housing providers. On behalf of community who own this real estate that we have, I think it's important that we're clarifying what those parcels of land will be and will there be impacts and will they be consulted on the journey? Because if we identify a parcel, for example, um, so that's one question, is consultation with residents. But the other part to it is, we might identify a parcel of land that again has large vegetation elements on it and we're going to have to manage our E P B C and other matters on that. So I think we need to be clear about those things and get better at being clear upfront about matters of national, state and local significance on parcels of land. So I think we should not look at that, we should look at that in that context. So do we understand what the contact, what the, um, uh, level of consultation will be? I'm sure that'll be up to councillors, but.
Uh, yeah, so the, this body of work will be undertaken by council's strategic property services unit. So they will, um, undertake that preliminary examination and I anticipate that they will come back to you and they'll present their findings. So they'll put in front of you a number of land holdings which may or may not be, um, considered appropriate by council, um, to facilitate delivery of affordable housing. Now, um, there isn't a formal amendment process which obligates you to undertake consultation as part of that. However, it would be a logical step for council, um, to undertake consultation with the community if it were, if it was to anticipate that there were going to be, um, significant adverse impacts. I mean, that is a call that ultimately council will, will need to make. Just on a, a separate note though, how, in undertaking the review, it may be determined that some land holdings are, are suitable, for example, for, um, community housing in the future, but may not be appropriately zoned currently. If that were to be the case and that, and such a site were supported by council for, um, rezoning, then it, we would be obligated to undertake the major amendment process provided for under the minister's guidelines and rules and there would be a statutory consultation period as part of that. So without, you know, um, seeking to preempt what might occur as part of that exercise, yeah, there, there are opportunities for council to ensure that the community is appropriately consulted as part of that process.
Thank you, and I agree that, um, going forward, even if the state and federal government suggest that we go down certain pathways, that we do consult with the community because there will be, uh, issues and potential impacts that we want to mitigate against. So, um, I appreciate this is not, you know, necessarily the perfect solution, but it is moving in the right direction and I, I'm grateful to officers for those amendments relating to those points that I was asking the other day to try and get the temporary residential accommodation, um, clarified, thank you.
Just to make a point though, that, um, in regards to state and federal government, they do set targets when it comes to immigration and for population forecasts for our LGAs, so they do have a role, um, in how they manage growth and I just wanted to make that clear.
It's the partnering that I think is important, that I think we send a signal that we try and want to try and partner and work together with them so that the impacts are minimized.
Speaker against? I acknowledge that there was another question, uh, at the, on the previous, councillor Boglari, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak because unfortunately I, that question speaking for has been a little bit co- complex, so.
Um, thank you for that. Um, look, I'm, I'm agreeing to this today, today because I think we've got to do something and we can't let fear, I always hear, don't let fear stop you, and I, I think this is one that, um, we shouldn't. Um, because every time we go out in the community, community and, um, councillor Bishop and I regularly visit the Night Rangers down at Burke Dale and they can have up to nineteen people now, um, living there, uh, not living there, sorry, going there for food and everything. So there's so many different people in our community that are, are hurting today. Um, I, I really wish, um, the state government could address, um, a lot quicker than what the action is that, that we have seen so far, but it is such a, a mammoth task because the, um, Great Southern Migration which we were hearing about and the effects of COVID, I, I believe, you know, we're still seeing in this aftermath. Um, I wanted to ask though, because I think the sticking point seems to be on the, the caravans. Um, it's not just going to be carte blanche, here we go, there will be restrictions, there, that, you can't just set them up and your rubbish goes everywhere and you empty your waste down the creek and all of that. Um, perhaps if those constraints, um, regulations and, as you said, that the, um, advising in good time when the two years is up to make sure people are moving on or, like you said, if, if the time comes and we still need the help, that that can happen. Um, maybe that compliance and constraints could be just explained a bit?
And that, that will come back to council in October as well.
Yeah, so, by you madam mayor, so, yeah, correct, so there's a further body of work to be undertaken to consider potential adverse impacts and how they might be mitigated. So through a permitting system, and of course I'm speaking hypothetically here, we might seek to establish, for example, um, setbacks, um, to limit amenity impacts and that might be from property boundaries, but it might also be adjoining premises to limit noise impacts. We've got to consider things like the number of people allowed in each one, um, how we manage things like wastewater, um, how we address safety, for example, in rural area, there are a large number of sites that are impacted by push-by hazards. So all of these parameters are relevant considerations. We do need to undertake further work to understand those. We need to learn from what the mistakes of other governments or low LGAs that have moved quicker in this space that have potentially maybe done more than they would have, um, otherwise done in response to the housing crisis. So we think, yeah, there, there's a learning to be undertaken, um, so we can learn from others, but it doesn't mean that it won't be an iterative process, that we won't have adverse impacts and that we might need to revisit, um, that policy under the local law in, in due course to tighten or loosen some of those parameters and, I guess, thresholds that we set through the permitting system.
So by agreeing to it today, councillors will have input in that going forward and then you can vote yea or nay on that in, in October, that would be correct?
Yes, yes.
And could I also ask, do you think, um, maybe through you, madam mayor, um, through the council of mayors, with this major amendment package that the officers are going to have to do for some of the other actual, um, recommendations, um, is there any way that process could be speeded up a little bit so that we can actually, through one of you, I wasn't too sure, is there any way you can actually ask, you know, for a quicker process? And not excluding public consultation or anything, but we don't want a normal amendment can take up to two years and we're still sitting here wondering where it is. Well, that's not going to have addressed the situation that we need now, so.
Well, hopefully, hopefully the state government take the housing crisis seriously enough to deal with amendments like this quickly, but there is no guarantee. Um, and in my recent discussions, um, they actually, they are blaming us for the speed of amendments, so. Um, but anyway, uh, it, it will, I mean, I think, you know, it'll be up to you talking to your state members and ministers to make sure that, that we are working, wanting to work with them and, but there's no, there's no, unless you do a TLPI, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, is there another process that we could put in that would hasten the implementation of it?
Yeah, ca- um, by you madam mayor, there are, yeah, so the TLPI approach, um, was mentioned there. So it could be utilized, um, however, there's a specific, specific thresholds that have to be met in order to qualify for a TLPI. So we could, we could, in theory, request the state government to give immediate effects to the proposed amendments, um, through a TLPI. Um, and an alternative approach would be, so in the minister's guidelines and rules, the major amendment process has timeframes for, um, the, the steps that are required to be completed as part of that. You can request for the state to come up with, I guess, a, um, an abridged version of that. So if there's an agreement reached, mutual agreement by both parties, you could expedite that process and have streamlined, um, um, state interest review processes and turnaround from council. But obviously, it is still contingent on us coming back to council, for example, and, um, re- receiving sign-off. We would still have to take, undertake mandatory public consultation for a minimum specified period. So, so to some extent, yeah, there is opportunities to, to bring it forward and I would, I would, I would say that given the presence of the housing crisis, there would be a, a rationale and a reason why the state would agree to that. However, yeah, we really, um, can't guarantee how long the state takes to, the state undertakes its state interest review process for and that's really been a significant delay for us with current amendments.
So to ask for that abridged process to occur, do councillors need to put that to commence a major amendment packet, um, pursuit, blah, 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 requesting the state government to do that or can we just do that anyway?
Yeah, so, yeah, uh, w- we could request that anyway. Yep, so, so the current wording would not preclude us from seeking, um, yeah, that, that, um, tailored, I think they call it a tailored approach, a tailored amendment process.
Well, I, I would suggest. Well, I, I would suggest by the politics that flows around this particular topic, that this council should put that in their resolution.
Well, that's what I was wondering how, how best to, or could, I'd like to have an, move an amendment to it.
Uh, yes, thank you. You were good at throwing the numbers around, Dean, and I appreciate that because numbers draw a picture. You said there was approximately nine hundred people in Redlands requiring social housing. And I hit a different number the other night. So my question is, before you bring this back to us in October, are you able to consult with the people that are on the ground here at the coalface in Redlands dealing with, and they're highly skilled and dealing with social housing and crisis and trying to find places for these people?
So Dean was referring to public housing. His numbers are nine hundred and eighty-four were public housing. So that's housing commission in the old terms.
Yes, uh, but, but item three, that, that, that's the one that's got us, is this temporary of caravans and wheeled vehicles. We, we are going to, what are we going to be in, having in there? And if we have people who require specialist treatment for mental health and substance abuse and which we were told on Tuesday night was eighty percent that, that are coming through Redlands.
Different, different demogra-, different demographic I think you're referring to.
No, it's not.
Uh, yes, it is. Yeah, it is. People who own the properties will decide who lives there. We won't be able to, we don't actually vet people going into any rooms.
I beg to differ. The people that own the properties will be the people that will be profiting. So we can't legislate what type of people they allow on their property.
Correct, but they will decide themselves.
We've had complaints from Southern Thornlands where we had, um, the church group, if you remember, with all the mental health people staying there. And we had all those complaints to deal with. Now, that.
Was parole.
Parole, there you go, parole.
That's, that's community housing, it's a whole different kettle of fish. It's very different.
At the end of the day, the people will be the landlords and they will decide who goes in. And it will be cheap rent supposedly. So while I, I understand that nurses and so on, that, that twenty percent that do have good jobs and need somewhere to live and, you know, I've got one of those myself, I've got a son in that situation.
To your question, sorry.
So my question was, can you go back, be in between and consult with the CEO of a community centre who says that we, she is at the coalface of all these situations and has some solutions to offer? Can we do that?
So through you, madam mayor, to councillor, councillor, so just to be clear, we are not stepping into providing social housing.
We're facilitating landlords too.
Now, what we're facilitating is an opportunity for those who require housing to have an opportunity for housing, which is no different to the current housing market. So in the current housing market, any landlord can rent their premises to whoever they wish, regardless of any conditions they may or may not have. So this is no different to the current market. It's just providing another choice in that market. Uh, but we're not stepping into social housing. That's not what council does. That is quite clearly the domain of state government. And this is not suggesting that we do it.
Okay, um, speaker against? Qu-, is it a question? Sorry.
My question is relation, I, I don't, I really want to support this. I, I just have concerns with supporting freehold titling of townhouses. Being an ex-townhouse owner, I know the ver-, the importance of adding body, body corporate to maintain the amenity, whether it's pools, gyms, pesting, spes-, pest control. In fact, I think it's very hard to insure a townhouse because I contacted my insurance company and had to really done through the body corporate. So have you thought about what the implications of free titled townhouses could do?
Yeah, so the freehold titling of townhouses was obviously something that forms part of the amendment, medium density residential amendment package that was consulted upon with the community. And it received a significant, I guess, support from the, the community, um, moving forward with that proposal. I do take your point that there are potential implications in terms of the management of shared, shared assets. Essentially, this will be, uh, so, so under the current arrangement, if there's community title schemes in place and body corporates, they are charged with, I guess, overseeing things like the maintenance of the landscaping. They are charged with collectively undertaking other maintenance activities and obtaining insurances. In this instance whereby a freehold titling of a townhouse development was enabled, there would still be an obligation on those landowners to do those things. However, it's not through by the body corporate. So the owners shifts from the body corporate to the individual landowners that choose to purchase freehold townhouses in that, that situation to resolve those issues. In much the same case as someone on a individual lot that has a dwelling house is master of their own destin-, destiny responsible for establishing their own insurance policies, maintaining their lawns to a required standard. So it's, i- if this product is something that the market seeks to, um, or, or if this is something that developers think that there is a market for, there will be a commensurate response from those landowners in purchasing these properties, undertaking their due diligence and understanding those implications when they purchase, um, purchase those types of developments.
So really what we're doing is just re-, reiterating the amendment package that, um, I don't.
My issue, and I thought about this before, my issue is, is we have enough problems with dividing fences which are handled by the state and also tree issues between neighbours. When you've got a whole group of people in a townhouses trying to, you might have one person that doesn't give a rat's backside about the amenity and you'll have someone that's really concerned about it. It's just going to be warring within their own community over who's doing what, who's, who's cleaning the pool, who's maintaining the gym, who's going to the landscaping, who's going to point out the colour of the facade of the townhouses? I mean, it's, it's just, I mean, I didn't, I was recommended by solicitor when I was looking at townhouses not to buy one without a proper body corporate because it's just striped with problems. So I'm really concerned about that. Number two, the rest I support.
Yeah, I think it's already in, in the mix though, so. Are there any other speakers' questions? Councillor Talty, you have a question?
Madam Mayor, just on that matter, I had a previous question, but it was already answered. But on that matter, we already have setups from prior to our current planning schemes in the Redlands. I'm aware in my electorate, I have, I have individually titled homes that have a shared area that is run by a, a board of homeowners who elect, um, who elect a, a board to make decisions about that. They share the mowing, et cetera. I'm not sure what it's called, but I'm sure the officers could explain that you don't have to have a.
A community title type of approach? Can I get that answered? I think that was a question, but thank, thank you. Is that?
Just to be clear, in terms of the amendment, what we're really referring to is a freehold terrace type product. So we're not talking about shared amenities. And, you know, as we know, terrace products have existed for many, many years in many, many places. And so that's, that's, to be clear, that's, that's really what we're referring to when we talk about. Well, no, so that's not quite correct. So South East Thornlands does have a body corporate.
All right, councillors, I think the, the question's been kind of asked and it has been, definitely been answered. I might just go to summing up if that's okay. There's been a lot of debate. Oh, pardon me, proposing an amendment, councillor Boglari?
That officers write to the minister during the amendment process to request for the expediency of delivering constructive changes to the city plan, that the process is an abridged process?
My phone isn't on. Yeah, for a tailored amendment process?
Tailored amendment process. So that officers, I, I was going to put it in dot point three because that goes in after we've talked about.
I would have thought it comes right after one, actually.
After one? Yeah, well, two is about an amendment process too, that was all. That's why I thought number three would be better located.
Well, just that it's actually covering whole.
Yeah, it's not covering the.
Councillors, can I just be so rude and interrupt now? So the, with this item, resolution item six is to finalize items one, three and four and present back to council for consideration by the end of October. You do not need to make that resolution right now. In fact, we could do it in October. And I think that would be probably the most efficient process to follow. That's, yeah, David's idea, not mine.
All right.
See, see, it's a good idea to handball you. Go down the back end and handball your stuff, David.
Councillor, councillor Mackenzie, would you like to sum up? Do you remember moving the motion?
I do remember moving the motion. Um, I, just in summing up, I, I would hope that we can't force the state to hasten their processes, but I'm hoping that we can hasten ours with regards to our local laws without, um, you know, not consulting our community on it because that's part of our local law process, but hoping that our backend can, um, of that process just be expedited. Um, I know there was concerns raised around, um, you know, what will the headline be in two years? My concern is what's the headline going to be now? Is the headline going to be, you know, council won't facilitate safe accommodation for vulnerable people in our community? Or council would rather people sleeping in cars in car parks? I, as a property owner, would certainly, if I lived on ten thousand square metres and was having people staying on my property in a caravan, I would be vetting those people. And I would, I would assume that those property owners would do their due diligence, no different to if they were renting out rooms in their house that they were also residing in. I think that we've had a fair bit of discussion. I thank councillors for that.
Councillors, those in favour? Those against? So that was unanimous? There was a few lazy hands. Just to check, tho-, those in favour?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Thanks councillors. The next item is sixteen point one, which is the response to notice of motion, Redlands Coast Regional Sports Recreation Precinct. Move in second place. Move councillor Talty, second to councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Talty?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. We have a num-, a, a, a great shortfall of sporting facilities and, um, amenities in the southern part of the city. We have had a, a holdup in the precinct master plan moving forward for Heineman Road. And this just proposes to put funds that would have been spent in the financial year into, oh, sorry?
You're on the wrong, you're on the wrong item.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Sixteen point one. It was a response to a notice of motion? There's a few of these in here, so it gets a bit confusing.
Sorry, um.
This really, I think, um, just explains.
This is, okay, sorry, this is a, a response, so I would have let other councillors move.
Did you, oh, councillor Talty, would you like councillor Boglari to talk to it now?
She's welcome to it, yes. It's not what I, yes.
You didn't put your hand up, so I just.
Um, look, I do thank the officers for bringing us this information because Heineman Road has been, um, a little bit of a hiccup and, and confusing along the way with various changes in it. And my concern for bringing the motion was to ask for more clarity because there was also confusion out in the community about what was going to happen, about the initial costings, about sixty million, and now it has escalated. There were some points in the report that alarmed me because when I put my hand up initially to sixty million, I thought that was it. I thought that was the entire project. You know, now it's basically stage one. And I had thought it was based on a verified quantity surveyor's report and everything. I thought that had all been done. So I, I did feel a little bit frustrated at the increase in price and realising I'd actually put my hand up for something which was not what I had put my hand up for. This report sort of clarifies that for me. There's been increased scope, in my opinion, in the, um, some of the areas. And I have more questions now, actually, if I could ask a couple now about the contract. I believe a contract has been awarded. Or are we, we didn't go to that point? And if we have had a contract awarded and we're now having a bit of a delay, are we allowed to speak about that or not?
I'll get, I'll get officers to respond, but councillors around the room should be completely aware of all of those elements I would have thought through the processes we've been through.
Yeah, well, I think I am, but now there's another change in that we're sort of, um, pausing stages and parts. And I wanted to know, well, does that contract now stand? Or what happens with that contract? Because I thought it was for all of stage one and now stage one has evolved.
So, so we have an existing contract for stage one of the project and that stands.
That stands still.
So we're, and we're currently in the middle of the EPBC, um, application process and that contract still stands.
And the stage one now is the BMX track and everything having, because I, I didn't actually see that in the report. I, I thought what was in the report was the old initial one.
Was, that was always part of it?
So we.
Master plan hasn't changed?
It hasn't changed yet.
Hasn't changed.
So the contract is for the master plan, which is in the report, but I thought we were going to have to change it if the EPBC act.
Well, that's depend, that's, that's a depend, that's a, a, a commercial in confidence discussion of.
Oh, okay, so we're at that point of time, sorry.
And, and at the, at this point in time, what, what we have adopted and what you adopted and every councillor put their hand up for is what's gone out to contract, which you also agreed to. So that's where we're at right now.
Right, that was my point of clarity because I thought there'd been a change and that wasn't addressed in here. Because that's what I was sort of asking for, um, the evolution of, um, this, this project, that was all.
I think your confusion might have been about the whole project versus stage one. That might have been where you got confused, but that was.
And then where we're going now. In the motion though, it's actually got two, two points. To note the contents of report relating to the, um, Redlands Coast Regional Sport Precinct, stage one and two, which is what my motion said. And then it's got point two, and I wasn't too sure why that was even added because it doesn't, that was not asked for in my initial notice of motion.
So through you, madam?
Yeah, I was happy to deal with that.
Um, this was making the point that if we just said stage one and two, which is all in public record, if you go back to our YOURSA cycle, you'll see in December twenty one, we announced what stage one was and what it included. This is new news that has come about as a result of the referral to the, through the EPBC process. And this will have an impact on the project.
All right, so it was put in to just explain that.
Yeah, yeah, I think I, this, I want councillors to note that we've self-referred it and it's, it will impact on the pro-, on the, well, it has so far impacted on the projects.
Because to me, it, yeah, it, well, it was bought with, seventy percent of it was bought with environmental land anyway, due to the high value. But also if we're talking about delays, we should also put in another dot point about the high cost of construction now as well, this delay in things.
Have a contract to slide at the moment, so there's no discussion that we, we could.
Well, I, I just didn't like the way it read as if any delay is getting blamed on the environmental section because I think that's inaccurate.
It is actually.
No, it is.
Really?
Yeah.
It's one hun-
What about the cost increase costs that we've been talking about?
We have a contract, we have a si-, we have a signed contract.
We have a signed contract. And it has been delayed for that reason.
All right.
Yep.
Speaker against the motion? Question? Make, make sure they're questions, please.
Yeah, just in relation to the EPBC matters that we're now dealing with, is it wise and could it be an option that we look at the scope and do further learning to manage our expectations, save costs going forward?
This motion really just asked for that, what councillor Boglari has, um, there'll be further discussions obviously in regards to that as more information becomes clear to us. So yes, that will happen.
Yeah, so I just, I think it's worth asking that question. Sorry?
That's been answered, I think.
Yep.
Happy for, I'm happy for an officer to confirm that that will be the case. We'll obviously monitor this as it goes and we'll have to make decisions along the way, subject to what the EPBC require.
Correct. So we're in the middle of that application process. And when we get some feedback on when there's decision points to be made, we bring that back to council for, for, for those decisions to be made. on when there's decision points to be made, we bring that back to council for, for, for those decisions to be made.
I think that we res- referred ourselves to make sure we meet those processes.
Yeah, and, and just wondering, um, do we anticipate that we will be waiting for that other lobbying and advocacy around the changes? Like, any idea on the timeframe for this? Like, will we adapt prior, or do we wait for that lobbying to take place?
I think that's a discussion for another, another day when we have some more information.
Yeah, I just.
I mean, advocacy and lobbying is not a exact science, and we wouldn't be able to give you timeframes on any of those sorts of things, so.
So, are we sticking with this process, or are we going on a parallel process with the advocacy and lobbying in terms of the EPBC, their assessment?
It's a different item, councillor, you're not to- you're not talking to the item now, I'm not quite sure, that's, you can take that offline. Advocacy, you just, I just said that you can't actually put a figure on, a time figure on advocacy, so I'm not quite sure what you're after.
Do we know how long the EPBC process will take?
No. No.
Uh, what are their timeframes?
Are none.
There are none?
Well, until we get some.
So, I mean, what, what?
We, no.
No, we're not clear on the time it will take, um, it's clearly taking longer than we anticipated initially, but when we get the ultimate decision, um, we're not sure about how long that will take.
It's an iterative process that goes backward and forward and backward and forward, and you don't know how long it goes between letters.
I mean, in terms of clarity with this, with this in front of us, as, as a point of stage one and stage two.
Well, this is just a. This is just an item for noting that was asked for by councillor Boglari, so we can have a further discussion about the project and its, and its more current.
I think that's, I think that's important, because the project may need to.
Councillor, you're not speaking to the item, that's the issue, I, I guess I'm trying to raise politely, so. Councillor Berry, do you have a question?
Uh, thank you, through the chair, uh, following from what's just been discussed just now, that we know the AEPB is now controlling this. Um, I, I'm looking at option two, uh, for further information, because I could not find in here, unless you can tell me where it is, uh, I could not find in this report that, uh, if we experience something unpleasant and this contract does not proceed, um, are there penalty clauses for termination or being in breach? And if so, where in this report is that?
That wasn't councillor.
Because that's all part of stage one.
Councillor, the report answers the notice of motion. The ca- the report answers the notice of motion, and any of those other discussions are, are, are not for this particular item.
But isn't that information that should be in this report?
No, because it wasn't asked, it wasn't asked for, councillor.
It wasn't asked for, can I ask for it now then and move option two?
At the moment, we've got a live option, so, um, at this point in time, we're going to take the further questions, and you had your question. So, thank you. Well, so councillors, be, be clear that this is a very big project, which means a lot to about five, six, seven thousand people in our sporting community in our city, so it will come back to council as we get more information, we know what we're doing and how we have to deal with it. Um, I think trying to add it all to this particular notice of motion, which was requested to get further information, is probably not going to serve the purpose that you're after, so it's a, it's a large project, and it will come back as we have more information. Uh, speak, uh, sorry, question, question councillor Mitchell?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I'd say far beyond the nine thousand, I think the hundred and sixty five thousand people of our city, uh, impacted by this with their kids, grandkids and themselves. My question is, um, I note the last update on the YOURSA's ninth of March, and that includes some things. Because of the complexity, the importance of the project, and the, the real importance that we deliver on the visions that we, we've, um, said to the community, can there be, uh, more, more regular or more timely updates through the, the YOURSA as, as things progress? EPBC and other arrangements as ever?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, yes, um, that's the stage that it's at at the moment, and there will be more discussions with councillors as we sort of move through the EPBC process.
Question councillor?
Uh, councillor Hughes has expressed to me that I, I may need to flag that if this goes down, that I push for option two. Is that correct, I need to flag that now?
Councillor, I'm, I'm surprised you don't understand the amendment process, you can move an amendment now if you like. You want to use that, move the alternative, you can do that now and test it.
No, no, I'll go with the flag.
Well, then I'll put, I'll put the motion, then councillors, if there's further discussion, um, councillor Talty, you actually moved the motion and, and for- forfeited your right to speak to councillor Boglari, do you require any?
I'd be disappointed the report being received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, for noting the report, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
Those in favour, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, uh, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Hewlett and councillor, um, Adelia who voted not to, like, Adelia Berry who voted not to note the report. Um, moving on to the next point, we have, um, we have another notice of motion, councillor.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, just to interrupt, you failed to mention councillor Edwards was for that motion.
Oh, sorry councillor Edwards.
Thank you.
For that, thank you. Um, next item is eighteen point one, um, councillor Talty, you have tabled a notice of motion.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just, councillors have seen it, can I get you to, uh, sec- I get a second to thank you? Thanks councillor Mackenzie, okay, you can speak to it now, councillor Talty.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is very straightforward. The work's being done, um, anyway, and we do a great deal for the environment, as we've discussed in other, other motions today. Um, so, we're looking very closely at the moment with providing a lot of information through the requirements of the EPBC, and I thought that it would be very timely to allow that information to be put into a report that was publicly available to our rate payers, so they can see all of the work that we do, as was mentioned in the, uh, prior matter, uh, for the motions to go to the, um, meeting, uh, the LGAQ. Um, we do a great deal in regard to looking after biodiversity, and this motion simply seeks to make that visible in one report, which allows people to look at what we do for, um, endangered, uh, species in our local area. And, uh, the work's being done anyway, it doesn't need any, uh, additional work, simply asks us that we put all of that information into one place, and, uh, makes it very open, visible and accountable for our community to be able to see. Thank you.
Um, judging by the looks on people's faces in the back of the chambers, I don't know that it won't require any work. Um, so I might just, I might just, I, I might just ask officers to talk about the work, and, and if there's a way.
No, I'd, I'd, I should be.
Graham, just an idea, we've had a look at the motion, what time would be required, officer time to put this together? And any, any suggestions to make it, um, more efficient?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors, so, um, the notice of motion, uh, you know, has some really important principles in there, so, so what we do in the conservation space, uh, you know, is, is relatively well documented, uh, put into a report though. Um, we, we actually will need to spend a little bit of resources, uh, on that, but it could happen relatively quickly. Um, the basis for that is that the, uh, I guess the issues around EPBC, as we've discussed quite frequently today, uh, are front and square, and so it's really important that, um, we get a, a, uh, an understanding of, of the work that we've done historically, the work we're doing currently, and what we propose into the future, um, is apparent to all, because the, uh, the issues around EPBC, you can look at them at a project basis, but you can also look at them at a citywide or a precinct or a landscape basis. And so, um, so a report which kind of puts that into context is important, um, for us to understand, uh, what we're doing. But, you know, to, to the question, um, it is something that will require us to spend some time on, which is probably not in our current programme, um, and, um, that's probably just, uh, something we need to point out.
Um, I will go to questions in a second, but you might as well just hang around, I think, Graham. Uh, any speakers against the motion? Um, well, you had a question earlier, but, uh, a speaker against?
Yes, thank you, um, because this does seem to have line of sight with the previous, uh, issues relating to the EPBC and advocacy to the Local Government Association of Queensland Conference and so forth, there seems to be some work going on in the minds of councillor Talty, if not others, that this somehow aligns with the EPBC stuff and that other advocacy work. And I, I'm concerned, I think it's clunky, you haven't brought it to us for a discussion, um, and I, I'm, I'm concerned that it might go partway, but require officers to do all sorts of, um, workflows that are not part of what are currently planned. The EPBC is specifically looking at, um, matters of national environmental significance. These are remnant places of massive significance to the country, and it's not like we can, um, come up with some other alternative to propose, uh, offsets when that's not actually part of their process, and I think to try and use.
That's not what's in the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, just.
The seeming appearance of that is what I'm referring to, because it seems that that's intending to do that. There's many things, this council, I mean, we, we've got the naturally wonderful brand, um, that's tremendous. We've done some amazing things, looking after our natural, um, environmental estate. Uh, we've got some incredible programmes, our officers are extraordinary in what they have done to manage the parcels of land that we've got. It feels to me that this is trying to do some retrospective, um, problem solving, where actually it's, it's, it's looking retrospectively at solving things rather than proactively, which we could have done better and managed our situation in relation to the EPBC matters, where there might be some concerns, better. And, um, I, I, I'm concerned with, with this, I'm concerned that in some ways it doesn't go far enough, in other ways it's not really clear to the officers what they are intended to do, it's not clear whether it's related to the other work that's happening, um, in terms of the, um, uh, local government association work.
I think it's clear that it's very, it's very general, but I think it's clear that it's actually a more general approach.
It, it is more general, but I think what we're, what we're doing as a local government is appealing to other governments to try and lobby the EPBC through the EPA, which will have design, um, responsibilities going forward.
Madam Mayor, the council is not speaking to the item, none of that is in this item.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's specifically says, the federal government, Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act Assessment for community infrastructure projects specifically at present, Heinem and Road Sports Precinct.
Oh, it's not just.
Needs to take into, well, consideration, I mean, it is directly related, you're saying it's not, it is, it's, it's related.
Thank you.
And I think this, um, if it was brought to council for consideration, we might have had a better, um, proposal that was guided by officers, but I don't think this is the right way to go about it, and I, frankly, I think it's a bit cynical, the, the way that seems to be presenting itself.
Speaker for, councillor Mackenzie?
Um, yes, I'll speak for this, um, I constantly hear certain councillors and people in the community talk about transparency with our, with our, with the public, and I believe what this report brings is clarity around how much work this council actually does for our environment, because there is a misconception out there in the public that, um, we're out there chopping trees down and we don't protect our environment, we don't do enough. Um, I believe we spend at least fifteen million dollars a year if we take into consideration, um, the environment post and management separate charge, um, plus the additional works that we do that aren't, um, captured by that charge. We spend at least fifteen million dollars a year on managing our environment. Um, and I believe that bringing in a report back, um, satisfies the need that we're being transparent with our community, um, and shows them exactly what it is that we're doing with our local environment. Um, and I'm a little bit shocked, we ha- councillor Bishop constantly asks for environmental studies to be done on land, um, um, and for environmental studies to be done on land, um, this is just compiling the work that we do do for our environment and being transparent with our community on it.
Speaker against, councillor Boglari?
Um, thank you, um, I, I do want to speak against it, but I also would like to ask a question if I came through you to the councillor's motion, Jul- um, Julie Talty, because I'm not getting what the intent of the motion is either. And I want to know the intent of the motion, because if it's to just tell our community what we do for the environment, that's already there, so it, what is the intent?
To Talty, did you respond through the chair?
Well, in fact, Madam Mayor, it's not, it's, we do all these things and they're all piecemeal and they're all over the place, and this is narrowed, this is narrowed to just threat, uh, koalas and threatened species management. That's not my wording, that is what the officers have said brings it into, um, something that they can, that they, they thought was the best way to manage it, because that specifically relates to the concerns through the EPBC and the changes that we're facing. Um, the intent is simply to make available to the community, all in one place, all of the things that we do, and in this case, not all the things we do, because many of the environmental programmes we do won't come into this, because they're not specific to that clause, and to show people where we're spending their rates and to provide for them the background, the ten years leading up to and the five years, uh, going into where we can, and provide for people a snapshot, a point in time of all of the work that's been done, and to be open and transparent and show people what we do, what it costs, so they can see it all in one place. There is no ulterior motive, it is simply, we're doing it anyway, as the officers have said, it will be useful to be able to provide this to the EPBC. The EPBC is just a trigger, it's, it's simply, we need to do it, let's not just do it for that, let's do it for the community and let them see it all. We're always getting, all these people telling us.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just concerned though, if it is just for transparency to the community, um, wha- I agree, why is it linked to Heinem and Road and why is it linked to the EPBC? Um, that is my concern, and then if we're going to talk about transparency of what we've done with, um, our conservation things, are we going to say the changes we made in the last city plan, where we took off conservation land in private property and made it rural? We then allowed nineteen land uses in there that could become code. We took out the wildlife corridors and we've been battling the last six years to get it back in, and we're finally talking about it now, and it's only in the urban area. So if we're going to be transparent about everything we've done, we might also want to say some of the other changes we've made. So, I won't be supporting this today.
Speaker for, councillor Mitchell?
Um, yes, I will speak for him while I've got, um, I want to make sure the juice is worth the squeeze, so I have some questions around the scope and, uh, and the clarity of what we're asking for. Um, but to me, this is about looking forward, it's not about looking back. Uh, it's looking forward on what we can deliver to the community, importantly, and I think the, sure, the transparency piece, the, the appropriate data and information, it's easily, easy to consume. Um, I look at the website and looking into the future, I see this is a better habit of reporting what we do, might come out of this, the intent of a notice of motion, but I'm certainly happy to step into that space, because I, I think there is, uh, um, uh, gains for, for community confidence in what council's doing. I think there are potential gains in our advocacy space, whether that be to other agencies and level of government. Um, that may be potential, uh, gains for funding, um, you know, grants for projects if we've got a greater clarity around what we do. Um, so, my con- my only concern is, is, as said, is the juice worth the squeeze? And, um, making sure that we're not over-promising and under-delivering, but the intent of it I'll greatly support. Um, and I, and ultimately, it's about looking forward and delivering on the community. Trying to narrow it down into single issues, even ones as big as EPBC, is not correct. We do so much more than that, and so, we can argue individual issues and projects. This is really trying to bring it all together in a single place, and I think there are multiple benefits from it. Happy for some more discussion around the scope of what we're asking for.
Are you speaking against it, councillor Hughes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'd like to just drill down on point three of the motion, uh, that the report be provided to the federal government, so we've been talking about community, but in actual fact, this is a report that to be provided to the federal government to s- to assist.
So it says, made publicly available on the council website?
Yes, but drilling down to point three, um, yes, I acknowledge that, but drilling down to point three, that the report be provided to the federal government to assist, and I just really want to understand that, to assist, uh, from a.
Question, are you speaking against?
Yes, I'm speaking against and asking a question with, with my concerns with that point, from an officer perspective, will this body of work assist in the environment protection, uh, biosecurity conservation assessment of community infrastructure? The, the word assist, is, is that, is that what officers see that this would, this, uh, motion will ultimately do? Thank you.
Thank you councillor, so, uh, yes, and so probably to put some context around, um, what was happening anyway. Um, so, we've already embarked on a process to deal with, uh, EPBC as far as what we need to.
Um so we've already embarked on a process to deal with uh EPBC as far as what we need to do from a conservation planning perspective, what we need to know and understand. Um so that work was in train. So the notice of motion essentially um from our perspective is supporting um that work that we we need to undertake. And so just probably a couple of points we need to make is that um EPBC um has a focus around matters of national environmental significance. So um what we've traditionally done, we've looked after things that which are at that local level or state level and the national level has kind of been something that hasn't really been in our space. So this is something that we need to uh to consider and we need to consider pretty quickly uh given the, I guess, the discussions and impacts it has, um whether it's on projects, whether it's on um operations. It's it's quite wide ranging. So looking at the notice of motion, the things that um that we're considering is about matters such as threatened species. So what data do we currently have around threatened species? So we can talk koalas, but we can talk all kinds of of threatened species. How do we compile that together? Um at the moment, we have have some data. In fact, we may not have enough data. So this might identify some of those gaps which we actually need to start addressing. Um that goes then into those habitats which are of significance at that national level. Where are they? How do they how do they cross reference some of those um those threatened species? So what do we need to do from a planning sense to start addressing that? Um the other part of it, which is really important, is that the EPBC does talk about things such as advanced offsets and partnerships. And so what that is all about is essentially uh council being able to establish that again, not at the project level, but from a landscape level and a citywide level, what are we doing in that space which then allows us to, I guess, work with the federal government about recognition, future planning, um so that we actually start putting those levels of protection where we need to put them. So so to us, there's there's advantages um for doing this work. I guess the notice of motion supports that perhaps to happen quicker than perhaps we were originally anticipating. Um and that's our view.
There is no timeframe in the motion. The motion is there? Speaker four? Okay, any other questions? Question councillor Beridge?
Uh thank you, Graham, for um expressing. You said something there. I didn't have a question until you said something. You said that this is an opportunity to work out how much more work we need to do, what further investigations. Wouldn't that be part of our role anyway in this area? And why would we need a motion from councillors to tell environmental officers what more they that they need to pick their socks up and do more, which is how I read this.
Very unfair, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I I I know I get blunt. I'll try and fluff the words.
I don't need you to fluff the words, councillor.
More courteously.
So so councillor, just to be clear, we just we just debated another motion where a councillor asked officers to go away and pull a report together. It's absolutely no different to this one.
Just to be clear. Do we need to councillors to bring a motion for something that I would have thought was business as usual in in the work we do in council? In something as extremely important as our environment? Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I think it's probably not a question for you to answer, Graham, but maybe the CEO can answer that because I think every councillor is entitled to bring forward a motion.
Uh thanks, Madam Mayor. This this is asking for a specific report looking backwards ten years, forwards, five years. There's a lot of information we have um on the record, on the public record. The team are are absolute professionals and very excellent at what they do. This motion asks for a specific council report looking back ten years and forward five years. So I think the um premise that the team aren't doing a lot of this work and haven't been doing this work um is not quite correct. I think this is about probably speeding some of that work up. Um and the other thing that the third point in this um in this motion about the EPBC assessment, the reason that's getting a lot of airplay at the moment is it is affecting our projects that it did not affect a year ago. And there's a lot of that um work that we now need to put into play when we're widening roads, doing any work, building um in any environmental area. And of course, we've just discussed in the previous report, the work at um Mount Cotton Heinemann Road.
Thank you. All right. Question answered. Um would you like to add no further? I just I think um, you know, I think the community would really appreciate understanding the great work that the team does um under the leadership we have um with Graham and the team. Uh and understanding what's to come in the future. And I think that's important from our environmental credentials as well. And as I said earlier, um we're not a mining company that's, you know, we're we're what we're trying to do is provide social, environmental and economic and cultural outcomes with everything that we do. Um and I think that's been lost in the changes that we've seen. And I think it's fair that the community should be able to um use that as credit because communities pay for it, to make sure that they're um being, I guess, left out of opportunities for some of those other um outcomes and the quadruple bottom line. Um councillor Talty, would you like to sum up?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I'm surprised. I really thought this was just a no brainer. I I did not expect people to be offended by putting in one place for everyone, including the federal government, to see all of the programs and the intertwined work that is done in this local area in support of environment and specifically in support of the goals of the um federal government through the EPBC. Uh I think if we put a report together which shows not only the past, present and future in regard to this, where it's known, but also the way that things have been assessed. Why have why have some programs been discontinued and other programs progressed? That as much as is known. And we have a huge amount of data. I I accept that. But we spend a huge amount of rate payers' money and they're entitled to know what we're doing with it and how we qualify the way we spend it. Um I think people would say if they could see a report like this, oh, I didn't know council did all of that. We have a lot of people with a lot of opinions and this isn't seeking to make a judgment about these. This is seeking to provide the information for people to make a judgment for themselves, including the minister and the federal government. Um we have, I had originally asked for an audit of our programs. I asked, you know, what are all the things we do and how much do we spend and what benefit do we get from it? That was essentially what I was looking for. And the 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 uh impetus for that was the understanding that through the way the new EPBC regulation was being approved, it will be very difficult for us to be able to build community facilities in this city. And we're not being judged fairly, I don't believe, because it there is an assumption and there I'm sure many local government areas that have not put in the effort and the history that has been put in here in the redlands. And there we're being punished for the work already done in comparison to those who have done nothing. And I really wanted this report so that A, our our community could see all of the work that we do and B, that we present a uh a concise picture of the work that is being done in this area for the minister and for the department so that they can fairly assess us and look at what we do, how we do it and the way we move forward. So this serves a multitude of purposes. As has been said, the officers need to pre- present this information in one form or another anyway. I'm asking it to be put into a report so that the community can also have access to it. We have so much going on in the environment in this area. Just last week, a resident found a powerful owl sitting in their backyard. I have lived here my whole life and I have never seen a powerful owl in the world. So, you know, that's that's an impressive thing. I want the federal government to understand the local context when they're applying their EPBC assessment to this area for all of our community projects. And while Heinemann Road has been the catalyst that has caused us to be get a greater understanding of the effect this will have, it is a large effect across the whole city. So I'm asking for this report for those purposes. It's not to uh pardon?
Thank you.
No, it's not to form an assessment. It's not to say it's good, it's bad, it's whatever. It's to say here it is and, you know, read it and understand who we are, what we do and the fact that there's already a huge amount of work being done. And if it exposes gaps because we're putting it all together in one place, then that will provide understanding for us to do more or different. But at the moment, we don't know what those gaps are because all the information is all piecemeal. And yes, there's lots of information.
Councillors? Councillors? Use your standing orders, councillor. There is there councillor? Ca- councillor Hewlett, you've been here a long time. There's a book with standing orders. If you want to talk through the chair, do it according to the standing orders. Councillors, your your time has just about expired.
But it had actually not expired, as I understand it.
That's right. I I have been timing. Got one minute. She's got one minute and I'm assuming by the discussion, she's probably going to use it now. I've got a clock keeper at the back. Councillor?
Okay, so I'm sorry that uh asked
And we stop the clock when you get interrupted.
Transparency in our environmental and all of our programs, which is seems to be always asked for in everything else. With that, I'd like to put the vote, Madam Mayor.
Microphone?
I'm having a bad day with my microphone. My apologies. So ca- for those in favor, councillor Mitchell, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Edwards, those against councillor Boglari, councillor Hewlett, um councillor Bishop and councillor Beridge. That's that's carried. Just making sure I got everyone's name. Sorry. Sorry councillor Edwards, my um I'm not very finger triggered today with my microphone.
No, that's good. I support it.
Thank you. Um those couns- so those councillors, those motions now um are completed. So we have a confidential session and I'm assuming we need to go into confidential today. So if I can um just take a motion, thanks, that we move into confidential, move councillor Talty, second to councillor Hughes, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillor.
Let's take the motion that we move back into open session, move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Tolty.
Those in favour?
Aye.
Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Excuse me, item twenty point one, we have an updated um proposed motion moved by councillor Edwards, seconded by councillor Tolty. Those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Tolty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Bishop and councillor Boglari. Item twenty point two, mover and seconded, thanks for the court update, move councillor Tolty, seconded councillor Boglari, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour? Councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Tolty, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Mackenzie. Item twenty point three, mover and seconded, thanks for disposable land, move councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Mitchell, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, oh that's unanimous, apologies. Item twenty point four, there is an amended motion there, but um moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Tolty, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That's unanimous then, thank you councillors. Item twenty point five, uh please have a mover and second, I think, move councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Mackenzie, oh. Move councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Boglari, those in favour? The mo- the motion is lost. I don't think councillor Beridge understands what she's voting for. Item twenty point five, it's a second round application, just, can we take the vote again? Thanks councillors, those in favour? That is lost unanimously. Item twenty point six, um move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor s- councillor Edward, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, thanks.
Move councillor Edwards, seconded councillor Mitchell, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That's carried unanimously. Item number twenty point seven, move councillor Tolty, seconded councillor Mackenzie, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Tolty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Boglari, councillor Beridge and councillor Bishop. Item number twenty point eight, um moved councillor, sorry. That's wrong, sorry. Yeah, 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 I know, my running sheet's sending me it. Item twenty point eight, um mover and seconded, thanks, as amended, as amended, moved councillor Tolty, seconded councillor Mackenzie, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? Those in favour? Councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Tolty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Bishop. Thank you councillors, I close the meeting at two thirty eight.